Good morning, everybody. Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to Council Chambers and welcome to Meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Wednesday, September 29, 2004. The City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Meetings are open to the public and we do invite you to join us. For members of the public unable to attend council meetings, we can be viewed live on your cable station, Channel 35. We can also be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage or heard via council Members of the council, it is now just shy of 10:20 a.m. and we have nine members present, one shy of a quorum. But we also have, before conducting business today, a couple of special presentations. Let me recognize Councilmember Ludlow for the first presentation.
Good morning, colleagues. Good morning, Council President. Good morning, Los Angeles. It's great to be here and so glad that so many people came in here today for this presentation. And actually, they're here on a host of reasons. Many people talk about the struggles that young people are facing in today's environment, whether it be struggling with literacy, struggling with poverty, struggling with gang violence. At the cornerstone of a lot of those struggles is the difficulty that young people have accessing critical services, not only critical services but recreational activities. And so, it is a real, real honor for me to present to you all and recognize the fourth anniversary of the Tom Bradley Youth and Family Center, which is going to be celebrating its fourth year of operation on September 30. For those of you who have been down Pico Boulevard any time in the last couple of years, you'll see a beautiful building that really does give honor to the late Tom Bradley and his vision that all young people deserve an opportunity to achieve great things in life. And so, as you all know, as city leaders, that the programs and the buildings that we build are only as good as the programs that we house inside them. And the way those programs flourish and the way they succeed is by having a dedicated team of staff and professionals to actually make the programs come to life. And so today, it is my honor to recognize the lead staff that keep this project going. We're going to be recognizing the project assistant, Rosa Russell, the project coordinator, Andrea Solomon, and the project coordinator, Tony Nicholas. And I wanted to bring each one of them up here with me, if you could have you guys stand forward. As you all know, Tony has been a legend in Los Angeles. His family is legendary performers. His children are absolutely stepping in the footsteps of their family members as they continue to break all types of records and achievements in the performing arts category. And so, Tony, who has done a great job raising his own family, is also seen in the community as raising the community family. And so, it is a real, real honor to have Tony here today to say a few words on behalf of the Tom Bradley Youth and Family Center, but I can't tell you how much we appreciate the leadership, the vision, and your perseverance to make that a real, real milestone in the entire city, but a great landmark for young people. So please welcome the project coordinator, Tony Nicholas.
On behalf of the Community Development Department and my fellow managers that are here and other staff from CDD that came here to see us receive this award this morning, and of course, the staff of the Tom Bradley Youth and Family Center and all the volunteers, I want to say a special thanks to Councilmember Ludlow for honoring us here today. There are other YFC staffs throughout the city. There are nine other YFCs that are doing just a remarkable job out there serving the community. We are just one of them. You know, it is a great honor and a pleasure to be able to serve the people of the community of Los Angeles, but especially to be at the Tom Bradley Youth and Family Center, to honor and keep on the legacy of Tom Bradley. It's important and significant that we're here today to receive this award because it was, to this day, September 29, 1998, when we lost Tom Bradley. That was the day of his passing. So it is very fitting that we're here today to honor his legacy and we are committed as a staff to ensure that his legacy will live forever by providing good services and good work to the residents and the community of Los Angeles. Thank you very much.
And I also understand the festivities. You want to mention about the festivities?
Yes, yes, you're all invited. Tomorrow, we're going to be celebrating the fourth anniversary of the Tom Bradley Youth and Family Center. We're located at 5213 West Pico Boulevard. Please come. We're going to have a number of speakers there. We're going to have refreshments and we're going to, of course, continue to carry on the legacy of Tom Bradley. So you're all invited. Please come out.
Mr. Ludlows.
Mr. President, Mr. Ludlow, thank you. Tony, thank you. Andrea, thank you. Rosa, thank you. And it's so wonderful because I have had a great life in this city and one of those persons who helped me in 1974 was Tom Bradley, when he appointed me to the Tom, it wasn't the Tom Bradley, it was the Los Angeles City Youth Advisory Council when I was a youth. And all those years later, I'm able to contribute as a council member. And Wendy Gruhl was also later on that youth council. Ed Reyes was on that youth council. Mark Ridley Thomas was on that youth council. And someday, some students from Third Street School or any other school in Los Angeles will be there and help this city. And I just wanted to say it's fitting, too, that you come down on the day of Tom's passing because I know we have emotions sitting around in our action, but we're building about 11 new high schools in this city and I truly believe one of them should be the Tom Bradley High School to stand for the memory of a great mayor who served this city not just as a mayor, but as a council member and a Los Angeles police officer. So let's continue to do that, too, and continue his legacy. Thank you, Martin Ludlow and Tony. Thank you all very, very much.
And if you, I know you have a lot of business today, but I'd be in so much trouble if I didn't say this. You know, my driving force behind me is my wife, Dr. Vanita Nicholas. You know I'd be in trouble if I didn't introduce her. And she is a community activist in her own right and it's just been wonderful. We just celebrated our 22nd wedding anniversary. So, yeah, so again, thank you. Mr. President, thank you and I just wanted to again thank Rosa and Andrea and all of the staff of the Tom Bradley Center, but also the CDD, the Community Development Department, for standing by this important community center and making sure that the doors stay open and that the program continues to run. So thank you and congratulations to the staff.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ludlow. And before proceeding to the next presentation, because we do have one more, members of the council, I have a very special request. I need our council clerk, Maria, to please vacate her seat and ask Mr. Carey to come forward. Is this the power of accurate observation coming through?
So they can hear you.
Clerks, take your places. Mr. Clerk, for the council meeting of Wednesday, September 29, 2004, will you please call the roll?
You've got to be kidding. Maria?
I won't sign off on the retirement.
You've already done that.
Cardenas Garcetti, Gruhl, Han, Ludlows, Misakowski, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Smith, Viragosa, Wyssine, Padilla, ten members present and a quorum, Mr. President.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Clerk. Will you please now join me at the podium? We had to do that, Mike, come on. You've been here too many years to not do something like that that reminds us of your many, many years of service to the city of Los Angeles. Members of the council and members of the public who are here to join us, I'm going to ask for your patience a little bit, but it is our honor today to celebrate the career of a true servant to the city of Los Angeles and to the people of Los Angeles, that of Mr. Jay. As you all know, Tony has been a legend in Los Angeles. His family is legendary performers. His children are absolutely stepping in the footsteps of their family members as they continue to break all types of records and achievements in the performing arts category. And so, Tony, who has done a great job raising his own family, is also seen in the community as raising the community family. And so, it is a real, real honor to have Tony here today to say a few words on behalf of the Tom Bradley Youth and Family Center. But I can't tell you how much we appreciate the leadership, the vision, and your perseverance to make that a real, real milestone in the entire city, but a great landmark for young people. So please welcome the project coordinator, Tony Nicholas.
On behalf of the Community Development Department and my fellow managers that are here and other staff from CDD that came here to see us receive this award this morning, and of course, the staff of the Tom Bradley Youth and Family Center and all the volunteers, I want to say a special thanks to Councilmember Ludlow for honoring us here today. There are other YFC staffs throughout the city. There are nine other YFCs that are doing just a remarkable job out there serving the community. We are just one of them. You know, it is a great honor and a pleasure to be able to serve the people of the community of Los Angeles, but especially to be at the Tom Bradley Youth and Family Center, to honor and keep on the legacy of Tom Bradley. It's important and significant that we're here today to receive this award because it was, to this day, September 29th, 1998, when we lost Tom Bradley. That was the day of his passing. So it is very fitting that we're here today to honor his legacy. And we are committed, as a staff, to ensure that his legacy will live forever by providing good services and good work to the residents and the community of Los Angeles. Thank you very much.
And I also understand the festivities. You want to mention about the festivities?
Yes, yes, you're all invited. Tomorrow, we're going to be celebrating the fourth anniversary of the Tom Bradley Youth and Family Center. We're located at 5213 West Pico Boulevard. Please come. We're going to have a number of speakers there. We're going to have refreshments, and we're going to, of course, continue to carry on the legacy of Tom Bradley. So you're all invited. Please come out.
Mr. Labange.
Mr. President, Mr. Ludlow, thank you. And Tony, thank you. Andrea, thank you. Rosa, thank you. And it's so wonderful because I have had a great life in this city. And one of those persons who helped me in 1974 was Tom Bradley, when he appointed me to the Tom, it wasn't the Tom Bradley, it was the Los Angeles City Youth Advisory Council when I was a youth. And all those years later, I'm able to contribute as a council member. And Wendy Gruel was also later on that youth council. Ed Reyes was on that youth council. Mark Ridley-Thomas was on that youth council. And someday, some students from Third Street School or any other school in Los Angeles will be there and help this city. And I just wanted to say it's fitting, too, that you come down on the day of Tom's passing because I know we have emotions sitting around in our action, but we're building about 11 new high schools in this city. And I truly believe one of them should be the Tom Bradley High School to stand for the memory of a great mayor who served this city, not just as a mayor, but as a council member and a Los Angeles police officer. So let's continue to do that, too, and continue his legacy. Thank you, Martin Ludlow and Tony. Thank you all very, very much.
And if you, I know you have a lot of business today, but I'd be in so much trouble if I didn't say this. You know, my driving force behind me is my wife. Dr. Vanita Nicholas. You know I'd be in trouble if I didn't introduce her. And she is a community activist in her own right, and it's just been wonderful. We just celebrated our 22nd wedding anniversary. So, yeah, so again, thank you. Mr. President, thank you. And I just wanted to, again, thank Rosa and Andrea and all of the staff of the Tom Bradley Center, but also the CDD, the Community Development Department, for standing by this important community center and making sure that the doors stay open and that the program continues to run. So thank you and congratulations to the staff.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ludlow. And before proceeding to the next presentation, because we do have one more, members of the council, I have a very special request. I need our council clerk, Maria, to please vacate her seat and ask Mr. Carey to come forward. Is this the power of accurate observation coming through?
So they can hear you.
Clerks, take your places. Mr. Clerk, for the council meeting of Wednesday, September 29th, 2004, will you please call the roll?
You've got to be kidding. Maria?
I won't sign off on the retirement.
You've already done that.
Cardenas Garcetti, Gruel, Han Labange, Ludlow Misakowski, Parks, Perry, Reyes Smith, Viragosa, Wyssine Padilla, ten members present and a quorum, Mr. President.
Well, thank you very much. Mr. Clerk, will you please now join me at the podium? You've been here too many years to not do something like that that reminds us of your many, many years of service to the city of Los Angeles. Members of the council and members of the public who are here to join us, I'm going to ask for your patience a little bit, but it is our honor today to celebrate the career of a true servant to the city of Los Angeles and to the people of Los Angeles, that of Mr. J. Michael Carey, the city clerk. Let's give him a hand. Mr. Carey has served the city in six different departments, beginning with the Recreation and Parks Department, personnel, the CAO's office, the city attorney's office, the CLA, and then finally entering the city clerk's office, where he served as executive officer from 1984 till 1996, and officially as the city clerk for the city of Los Angeles since 1996 till today. He's a graduate of Occidental College and holds a degree in psychology, which I think actually prepared him to deal with this body quite a bit. And then the official duties required a law degree that he received from the Southwestern University School of Law in 1976. Among his notable achievements in his tenure in the clerk's office has been the Chad Free Election of 2001, reassuring everybody that elections in the city of Los Angeles are more than above board. The Mobile Operation Polling Place, he's overseen and implemented numerous business tax code changes, an issue that remains a pertinent issue in the city of Los Angeles and affecting our economy. He created and has overseen the Business Improvement District system that we have in the city of Los Angeles. And aside from a number of technical amendments to the city's charter, he was personally involved in advising the two charter reform commissions that did some tremendous work just a few years ago and produced the city's charter that the city lives by to this day. I think just as incredibly, Mr. Carey represents the third of four generations of city servants in the city of Los Angeles. His grandfather, Edwin A. Bishop, was for 32 years, Mr. Labange, you're going to like this, an employee of the Bureau of Engineering. His father, who's the one you're thinking of, Lloyd Carey, worked for 29 years for the good old Department of Water and Power. Talked about Michael's career, and we all know his daughter, Tricia, who is an employee in the Chief Legislative Analyst Office. So she represents the fourth generation of Carey service to the city of Los Angeles. Why don't you both come up? And as we all know here inside of the building, Michael is very happily married to D. Carey, an assistant city administrative officer. That's the biography. But I think that the personal and the impactful is when we all stop and think about it, when people look at city government, whatever city they live in, they think of the mayor, they think of the council. Those are the public figures, the elected figures. And then we all have our numbers people behind the scenes, we have our policy people behind the scenes, but none of it, none of it holds muster legally, constitutionally, none of it can stand up if it wasn't for the integrity of the systems that are in place. And when it comes to the record-keeping, when it comes to the archives, when it comes to the processes that things need to go through for approvals and for changes, it's the city clerk that is responsible for that. And so, for the maintaining of the integrity of the elections in the city, the lawmaking in the city, the decision-making in the city, the city of Los Angeles owes a big debt of gratitude to you, Mr. Carey, for your personal professionalism, your integrity, and your personality that you bring to the committees and to the council, day after day after day. And for all of that, please, please accept this resolution as a token of our appreciation and certainly best wishes in the next chapter of your life.
As you might expect, Mr. Carey and Mr. Padilla, we have a lineup here of council members, and I must say that the first who pushed their buttons were all the old timers who've been here with Mike for those many, many, many years. Let me start with Councilmember Gruel.
I'm an old timer. All right. I keep saying I'm only 29, right, Mike? Mike, I just, I want to, and I know you'll have several accolades from individuals around this horseshoe, but I have known you for over 20 years. You kind of scared me when I first started at City Hall. And I have to tell you, some days you still scare me as a council member, and I think that's what you like, that you want us to be a little scared of, Mike Carey. So I just want to thank you for your years of service and the fact that you were passionate, you can't always tell how passionate you are, but that you were passionate about this city, about the rules of the game, about ensuring that the voters had all the information they needed to make educated choices and to ensure that the city clerk's office ran smoothly and efficiently and that you could be proud of it. And I have to tell you, you can stand here today and be very proud of your service, very proud of your staff that you have helped train and mentored and your family behind you, because we are a real city family here. But I know I'm going to miss you. I will have you on my wall in perpetuity, I think, because of your, we all stood in front of you with our right hand up, swearing to uphold the city charter, and you have always made that a pleasant experience as well. So thank you for your dedication, your sense of humor, and your willingness sometimes to tell us things we didn't want to hear. So I appreciate it. You're going to be missed. We're very thrilled with your replacement who you helped train, and I know that you'll continue to be part of the city family. So congratulations and thanks for years of service.
Thank you.
Ms. Carey.
Mike, I just want to say very simply that the level of service you provided to all of the people of the city of Los Angeles made sure that their right to vote was always protected and always respected, and for that, we should all be grateful. I don't think people realize the importance of what you did on Election Day, every city election, and how much it mattered to them when their votes were cast to protect what they had done, protect their choices, to make sure that the ballots came in on time and that they were all counted in a manner that was not only efficient, but a process that was sanctified, nearly sanctified. And for those of you who've never been able to go into the elections division and have Mike take you around and explain to you what it means when the ballots come in, when they come off the truck, when they go through the process of being counted and separated, it is nothing short of astonishing. And for you to have presided over this process for as long as you did is really something that should go down in the record books, and everyone who comes behind you should use you as the standard that they should try to reach. And on a lighter note, there's nothing more fun than calling Mike on Election Day.
Oh, yes.
After the polls have closed and said, "Mike, they haven't picked up the ballots yet." And, you know, maybe you didn't understand his passion, Wendy, but I think he growls first. First, he growls, and then, you know, it escalates.
What does she want now?
That's right, that's right. And it's low, and then it gets louder and higher. But he always got those ballots in, and they were always counted, and he always put up with my excited nature on Election Day. And I want to tell you, I learned a lot from you. I learned a lot from you, and I want to say I'm going to miss you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Garcetti. Eddy.
Thank you very much, Madam President. And I think it's only fitting, really, if you get a roast as a send-off. So congratulations on living off the public trough for so many generations and continuing that tradition as well. You've done really, really well.
We've done very well.
I think, yeah, there's no song yet, but we'll work on that one. I think you also scared me. My first day, I was so excited, I couldn't believe I won this election. I couldn't believe I was at City Hall. I got sworn in. I was looking for a smile, something, saying congratulations, and your face just said, "Look, they come, they go, it's just another one. I don't really care." But at the end of the day, I think, Mike, you really do care deeply about democracy, and we all know and feel that. I know Alex talked about the maintenance of elections and the maintenance of city records, but it's the maintenance of irony and cynicism that you have kept here, in a positive sense, because democracy, in my opinion, without cynicism is like, I don't know, bread without yeast, you know? It just doesn't rise, it doesn't air out, there's nothing in there. But you have kept us very much on the straight and narrow, and I think also put a vision forward that was more than just doing your job. One of the legacies, I hope, that will be of yours, which I know all the neighborhood councils and other folks that are here, will be an electronic file system that is not just the voter file, I mean, the council file that people can look up, but actually look at the supporting documents and the CLA and the CAO stuff that's there.
It's almost there.
It's almost there, I know. And we'll name it after you, especially when it screws up, you know? We will also, but in terms of chairing the Housing and Community and Economic Development Committee, too, over these years, I want to thank you for your work on economic development. It's a very unsung thing, but I know you showed up every single time on Business Improvement Districts, which are really a critical part of renaissance in many different parts of this city. So I want to personally thank you for that and for the privilege of working with you, and really want to wish you and Olivia, and we'll still have Trish around here, but wish you all the very best and congratulations.
Councilmember Labange.
Thank you very much. First and foremost, Michael, I want to thank you for your first job. Ladies and gentlemen, this man did one of the greatest jobs anybody could. He taught children how to swim at the Griffith Park Pool.
But I did not teach you.
No, you did, Mike. I remember, I still remember. He said...
Because you wouldn't be here today.
I know, you taught me. You taught me how to swim, like picking apples from a tree. I remember, that was something I learned right there at Riverside Drive in Griffith Park. But, Michael, thank you. So many good things have been expressed that should be expressed again, but what Jan Perry said was so true, how you ran the elections, and also everything, the highest integrity, a great local resident, Occidental College, a great tiger from Occidental, and then you worked your way up in your family history here, which was so important. This, and I say this to the public that's in this chambers today, this is the type of city employee times 44,000 that's working for you every day, making a difference. So, Michael, I thank you very, very much. And Dee, congratulations to you. Trish, you've got another 29 years to go before you get to sit at that podium. But I do want to say, I think that there was an announcement the other night with Jay Leno moving in five years, and I know there's term limits now, and Conan O'Brien's going to Jay Leno's spot. I think Eric Garcetti could go to Conan Nolan's spot there with that great tongue that he has. Congratulations to you, Michael Carey, and to your family. Thank you.
Councilmember Smith.
I hate to follow Garcetti as the warm-up person, but, you know, Mike, I just want to say congratulations and a great job here. You know, we named this room after John Ferraro and the Henry Rio Bridge. We're out of things to name. I think the refrigerator's still available, so we'll try and find something to name after you, but it's been a pleasure working here. I came here in 1970, and I am one of the old timers like Tom. And when I came here, you already were an institution in this building. You were well-known as the guy-to-go-to guy when you needed information, and I think you had the same hair then, didn't you, the gray and black hair thing?
Probably.
To kind of scare people.
It's gotten worse lately.
But you're truly a blessing for the city of Los Angeles, for all the people. In your term here as our city clerk, there's never been any questions about the operation of the office. It's always been run with the greatest integrity, with the greatest efficiency, and it goes to your demeanor as a person, as a very honorable, decent person, a person with great distinction and class, and you carry yourself that way, you conduct yourself that way, and it's been a pleasure to work with you all those 25 years now that I've been here. And you'll be greatly missed because we've gone through a lot of changes around here with neighborhood councils and the city council roadshow that we go out every month, and all the things you did with the Business Improvement. You've been a great contribution to the city of LA, and in your retirement, you and your lovely wife Dee, who also contributed greatly to this city, can wear the city badge very proudly because you helped make this city the great city it is. So God bless you and congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Zine.
Thank you, Madam President. Michael, you off-the-camera have a real personality and a real sense of humor that the people can't see, and you're so straightforward.
In a minute, in a minute. Pardon me? In a few minutes, they'll say so.
In a few minutes, they'll say so. And I know yesterday in Bradley Tower, there was a reception, many of your friends were there, and some of your personality was percolating. But your operation has been so smooth, and when I look at the agenda every single day and see how accurate it is and how flawless the clerk's office performs, at least it appears to be, from us that are observing it, and those that are monitoring on television and how the technology has changed and how you've come to committee before and asked for a few people here and there to make things work as smoothly as possible, a real stellar manager of an operation that could really have tremendous problems, and that's a tribute to you and your dedication. And I know that when you retire, you're going to be part of the national security.
Correct.
You're going to be down looking for the invasion coming off of the coastline.
Correct.
And I know that, yes, last night, you received some binoculars and some other equipment to equip you with that, to protect us here.
Yes.
So while the paperwork's going to leave you and all the technology, and the poem that Ruth Galanter read was apropos with all the trees, millions of trees that have been cut down, all the paper that's been generated, but you're assuming that new position. So you're really not going to leave any kind of government service. You're going to still remain in that focus of protecting people at the coastline as the invasion comes forth.
Correct.
Into Orange County, up into Los Angeles County and that region. So some of the last nights who saw that or heard that, he's got his little navy cap and he's got his binoculars.
Yep.
And he'll be there protecting our shores. So our city clerk is going to be protecting the shores of Southern California. But I wish you and your family well. Olivia, 40-plus years with the city of Los Angeles, and both of you have done a tremendous job. We all benefit from that. The people of Los Angeles benefit from it every day, and I'm glad we can honor and show our respect for you today. And then I know in a few minutes, you're going to really bring out that Conan O'Brien personality that sometimes we see on television. And you've got it heading in there. I know it's going to be coming out. Mike, congratulations.
Thank you.
Mr. Cardenas.
I just want to say thank you, and also, I was trying to think of some jokes, but I don't think I can keep up with Eric Garcetti's wit, but you did intimidate me, too.
Thank you.
And that says a lot. In the neighborhood I grew up in, you'd never admit that somebody five times your age intimidated you. But, as you can see, as you can see, I've matured, and I can admit it. But with that said, I just want to say you've certainly left a wonderful, wonderful mark on this great city and on the lives of many of us who've had to work with you and have enjoyed working with you. We all get raised with certain expectations, and we all want to be something that our parents and people in the community can be proud of. And as was mentioned earlier, tongue-in-cheek, you know, it's not your flamboyancy that you're going to be remembered by, but truly, it is going to be your integrity and the way in which you approach your professional responsibilities. And to me, that says a lot about you as an individual, and it's something that we needed in this city, in your position, and something that I know we're going to get with the person who's going to replace you. But you certainly have left a mark on all of us, and you certainly have made sure that this city, from your vantage point, has the integrity and also has the truth that you need to have in your position. So I want to thank you for doing that for so many years, and I want to thank you again for all of your service that you've given to this great city. Thank you, Mike.
Mr. Ludlow.
I intimidated you, too, didn't I?
I just wanted to do my Mike Carey impression. I enjoy doing the one on Tom Labange, and it's difficult to get yours down-packed. I've been working at it, it's sort of...
That's right. Never let them see you smile. They might ask you something.
Anyway, not to be upstaged by the great Michael Carey, Governor Schwarzenegger, on your week, had to move the June primary.
That's right.
And that's a tribute to you. We know you had something to do with that, and so, anyway. Let me tell you, it's been great. I enjoyed my five minutes with you on my first day. In 12 months, this is the first time I've seen you smile.
Yes.
So, good luck. God bless you, and I hope you smile in retirement.
Oh, I will, I will.
Have a good time, Mike. You earned it. We love working with you, and good job, well done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to, as a person who's spent 15 years in this building, to see Mr. Carey smiling is a compliment, it's monumental. But when I ran for office, we were at a point where the person that was the next highest voter was actually 4,000 votes behind me. But to avoid a runoff, I needed to get to that 50-plus-one.
Yes, you did.
And after two counts, there was one error.
Correct. Out of 22,000 ballots.
Right. We went from 33 to 34.
Unlike my friends in Florida. Unlike my friends in Florida.
That's right. So I don't want to leave an impression that you blew it, but you didn't.
No, I didn't.
By that one vote. But he found the votes. They were there.
Yeah.
Now, Mike, seriously, it's been a real pleasure to work with you. As stoic as you have been, and as firm as you have been, I always knew that you were always looking out for the city. No matter what the council said, no matter what the mayor said, the city clerk had to do his job. It did it right, it followed the rules, didn't bend to pressure, and because of the charter, one of the last positions that has that flexibility and ability to stand up for what it thinks is right. And for that, I think you set a precedent, you set a model for future city clerks, and it's important. As from the day when, I think Mayor Bradley committed a FOPA.
Yes.
And allowed a notice to go through that shouldn't have been in his mind, the clerk said it was processed, and all hell broke loose.
Yes. Trust me, all hell did break loose.
Never happened under your watch, though. And I just want to, again, thank you and Olivia for your hard work. And I keep saying this to many of the city employees, because it's true, you are the unsung heroes. We're the horseshoe here, but we are really a reflection of all your hard work. And again, look forward to working with you in your golden years.
Thank you.
Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, thank you, Madam President. Ms. Carey, this is your chance to get ready and offer your rebuttal, because I know you're an attorney and you're good at that. You've always been the voice of wisdom, the voice of serenity, sort of the calm in the middle of the storm. I wish Milton Bradley had called you last night, frankly, before, before he made his decisions. Not just Mayor Bradley, but Milton Bradley, because that's, that's the effect you've had on folks in this, in, you know, in civic life in the city of LA. You've always brought people, you've always calmed people down, you've brought people down to the most important, basic principles, and every piece of advice you've always given has been grounded in the law. It's not been about, you know, people say, oh, you call them as you see them. No, the advice you gave has been grounded in the law and what's lawful, and ensuring that all the processes, including these very delicate processes involving elections and people's political fortunes, and sometimes people's fortunes proceeded according to the law. I appreciated that that was your approach a great deal, and I wish you and your family the very best.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. Mike, just from the chair, before you get the final word, and as the longest-serving member in this council chamber with you here today, you are the rock. And when everyone, as is said, ever came to you and said, but can't we just bend it a little bit this time, your stern demeanor, your rigid upholding what the rules were, were something we learned and generations of council members and council manic aides before us have learned. I thought it was interesting when Wendy said that we're all just a little bit scared of you, because when Mike says yes or no, it's yes or no, there's no maybe. But the secret, and I think Jack alluded it to a little bit, you are also legally trained. You are an attorney. And I think, in truth, despite the many, many stellar people we've had in the city attorney's office, the city attorney is scared of you, too, because Mike, Mike makes the rules. And now, Mike, it is your turn.
Just one last thing. You all nailed it, because we had that common experience as members of the council, you know, just after the election, we all get sworn in, and we've all done public swearing ins now. But the real, real swearing in, when Mr. Kerry walks in with that big book, you know, that everybody dating back to 1781 has signed, when we all get to surround ourselves in an intimate setting with family, other loved ones, and supporters, and Mr. Kerry, there's two things that nobody did, I'm surprised. One is [makes a sound]. And then the other is, you know when he's telling a joke, because you hear [makes a sound], right? But my first impression of Michael Kerry was when he comes in, my family's there, I'm taking the oath, days before, it's July 1st, and he paints this doomsday scenario. Congratulations, but in case there's an earthquake, or a fire, or a tornado, or a hurricane that hits Los Angeles on July 1st, you need to be sworn in, so I need to get this out of the way. By the way, welcome and congratulations on being elected to the council, sign the book, raise your right hand, and that's how our public service careers begin. Ladies and gentlemen, the individual who's made that memory possible, Mr. Michael Kerry.
All right, off the clock. Apparently, most of the people are here to make sure I leave the building. Let me first introduce my daughter. She's already been introduced. Tricia, this one. They never leave home, do they? The other person that has spent a fair amount of time with the ups and the downs is my wife, Dee Kerry. She is not leaving the building. She will stay a little while longer. She apparently likes it here. The other person I've got to introduce is Olivia Galvin. Stand up, Olivia. Basically, Olivia has controlled my life here at City Hall for the last 20 years. When I became the executive officer in the clerk's office in 1984, I became entitled to an executive secretary. And Olivia was working for Councilman Snyder at the time, and I picked her up, and, trust me, she's probably handled several thousand constituent calls and solved a lot of, a lot of problems over the years. And she's got 42 years of service to this place, so, she started at a young age, as I did. Obviously, the city clerk staff have been tremendous, both past and present. I've always enjoyed working in the clerk's office. I think I've got some very dedicated people, and they've put together some great programs, and I hope they've always given you the best service of it possible, and I think they have. So, Mr. Deaton, little story. One of the reasons I knew I had to retire was some things were starting to come back time and time again. Ron and I first met in the CAO's office, and when I got into the CAO's office in 1972. And at that time, at about '74, the council asked Dr. Piper, who Ron and I had the privilege of working for, if Dr. Piper could create a budget group that would start analyzing the Department of Water and Power, like the CAO analyzes all the other budgets. The reason? Council was very upset over the lack of information on rate increases. You guys heard that before? So Ron and I, and a gentleman by the name of Jim Ross, worked for Jerry Selmer for a couple of years, and then Ron, Ron went on to the CLA's office, and then the council decided that it needed a little more information, independent information relative to budgets and stuff. Ron recruited me and a gentleman by the name of Gary Penny, and we came over and had a little fun in the budget, and that apparently is still going on, right, Ron? And Ron, with, gave some assistance to both of our mentors, Mr. Ferraro, who assisted me in becoming the city clerk under Mr. Reardon. So Ron has promised that he will help me guard the shores at some point if he ever retires, but that remains to be seen. Let me explain the attitude. It's a good act. Actually, it started when I was eight. My father said, don't ever let people see what you're feeling, and just be serious all the time. And I, and I played that out. A staff member to Mr. Benardi, before she knew me, and before she had to come and get some assistance from me, gave me the nickname "The Preparation Age Poster Boy." I'll let you fill in the last part of that. And that's probably true. I am a little unapproachable at times, and that's fine. Cut off a lot of questions from you folks. Somebody asked me the best day I ever had, and obviously, getting promoted through the ranks and becoming city clerk was obviously the best day I had here at the, in City Hall. They also asked me what was the worst day, and I said, the day I got promoted to city clerk. Because when your name goes up on the top of the letterhead, it starts to get a little personal when you see the city clerk screwed this up and did something else. But I've enjoyed it, I've had great staff. Yes, I've been a short timer for about four years. Mr. Fujioka has heard the speech, and a lot of other people. I've said I'm always 30 days away from retirement.
[inaudible].
No, it's, it's, it's about there. But I've truly enjoyed this place, I've enjoyed working with the council, I've enjoyed working with the mayors that I've worked with. I'm leaving the office in very good hands with Frank Martinez, assuming you concur with the mayor, and I would strongly urge you to do that. And the staff over there has been super, and they will continue to provide great service. So again, thank you very much, and I'll probably stay in touch. Thanks.
We are going to take just a brief moment for a group picture with Mike and the city councilman.
One other person I'd like to thank, Sebu, very, very, very nice. Thank you very much. Mr. President, following that great recognition of a great city employee, I think we've got to recognize some great children of Los Angeles, the great students of Third Street School in the 4th District. And their teachers. Nathi Polacek is their teacher leading the way.
And Mr. Anderson, Jim Anderson.
Mr. Anderson, good to see you.
We're going to sing our Third Street School song.
All right, for Third Street.
Ready?
We are Third Street School, and we're doing our best. We are way far ahead of the rest. In our blue and gold, we stand proud and bold as we learn everything we are told. With our panther cap, we're the love of the command, fighting all that are big and small. So on our way to school, we say, "We'll get Third Street, the best of all, yeah, Third Street."
All right, Third Street. All right. Thank you, Third Street, and thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Labange, and for our introduction, Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you. We've got another school that we're lucky to have here today. If I can please ask them to stand if they're not already standing. Glenn West, and from A&amp;H Academy at Belmont High School, we've got a class here that's studying American government, the American government class, if you'd stand up. We're studying federalism right now and looking at the local branch of government. So welcome, it's great to have Belmont High here. Let's give them a round of applause.
And all the students pick quite a day to be here. They can all write essays on what the city clerk means to me. Madam Clerk, first order of business, please.
First order of business is approval of the minutes.
Mr. Reyes moves, and Mr. Garcetti seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Ms. Sikowski moves, and Mr. Vieragosa seconds.
This is the time for comments from the public on items not on council's agenda.
Before going to general public comment, let's dispense with consent items, please.
Okay, on the regular agenda, Mr. President, item number six, there's a request to continue that matter for two weeks, and that would be October 13th.
Okay, members' requests to continue, item number six, seeing no objection. Item six is continued.
And also, Mr. President, on item number 17, the applicant has requested a continuance to November 19th.
Okay, any objection? Seeing none, that item is also continued.
Item number one on the regular agenda is an item noticed for public hearing, and there is an amending motion that has been distributed to the council members.
Okay, we also have a speaker card on item number one, let's call that special.
Next items are items for which public hearings have been held, items two through 29.
Okay, members, items two through 29 have had public hearings in committee, a motion from the floor would be required to reopen the public hearings. Do we have any requests for items to be called special? Ms. Sikowski?
Item 19.
19, call special by Ms. Sikowski. Mr. Smith?
Item three.
Three, call special by Mr. Smith. Mr. Zine?
Eighteen.
Which item?
Eighteen.
Eighteen, call special by Mr. Zine. Mr. Labange?
Mr. President, number 10, special. And number two, I'd like to ask, be special to it, I ask for a five-minute public hearing on both sides.
On item number two?
Please.
Okay, we'll get to that when we get to item number two. Mr. Cardenas?
Number five, special.
Five, call special by Mr. Cardenas.
Item four, special, and I'd like to continue, item 20.
Okay, for how much time? Item number 20?
Another week.
Okay, members' request to continue item 20 for one week, without objection. Next item, any other requests for specials?
Mr. City Attorney, the item number six, we're continuing officially, is that correct?
Yes, to October 13th.
Thank you, two weeks.
Any other specials on items two through 29? Seeing none on the balance of the items, Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate to vote.
13 ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Next items are items for which public hearings have not been held, items 33 through 64, 10 votes are required for consideration.
Members 33 through 64 now before us, and I do have cards on items 44, 47, and 58. We'll call those special to hear from members of the public. On the balance of the items, I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council. Those public hearings are open and closed. Mr. Ludlow.
Number 40, special?
Forty, call special.
Oh, I'm sorry, 48, I apologize, 48.
Forty-eight, call special by Mr. Ludlow. Any other specials? Mr. Smith?
Forty-five and-
Forty-five and forty-six.
Forty-five and forty-six by Mr. Smith. Other specials? Seeing none on the balance of the items, Madam Clerk, please open the roll, please close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Next items, Mr. President, are the closed session items sixty-five and sixty-six. Do you wish to hold those matters on the desk?
Let's hold all closed session matters on the desk.
Do you wish to take up public comment then at this time?
We can take public comment, or I believe Ms. Sikowski wishes to take up item number four, since there are a lot of people in the audience here on item number four.
I'd like to ask, we take forty-eight out of order, we've got the division chief here, we'd like, bureau chief, we'd like to get him back to work.
Okay, so we'll take item four, then forty-eight, general public comment, and the balance of the items called special. Sound like a plan? Okay, let's proceed to item number four. Mr. Veragosa? Item number four.
Yes, members, I, thank you, Mr. President, members. I realize that there are the votes today to support this measure, but I do think it's important to reiterate a number of the concerns that I have with respect to this project. I had said last week and continue to maintain that for some time, some three and a half years ago, a number of us had made a commitment that we wouldn't move forward with Playa Vista Two until we knew what the full impacts, the transportation, the environmental impacts were of Playa Vista One. As we heard last week, about fifty percent of Playa Vista One is completed. We still don't have the opportunity to really get a feel for the scope of the impact with respect to that matter, and we're already approving Playa Vista Two. I recognize, and as I said last week, and Steve Soboroff is someone who's worked very hard to reduce the size of this project and has done a very good job in that light, and they've addressed the issue of Playa Vista Two going beyond or west of Lincoln, and that was a good thing as well. But when you look at this project and the magnitude here, I think if the project is as great as everyone has indicated, and I've visited this project and tell you, and I can tell you that what I see, I like. But I also know that it has less than half of the affordable housing that Playa Vista One has, that the community benefits package could have been stronger, that this riparian corridor and the testimony around that, it was legitimate testimony, and I think wasn't fully taken into account, that the open space that we have here, although there is an open space component, I think it's the minimum permissible amount on the site. The issue of the Gabriolino Tongba tribe question, which we're respecting the rights and the heritage of those, of that tribe, were issues that I think are still open and give me a lot of cause of concern. And finally, the issue of some of the serious environmental issues, from the wetlands to toxics, are subjects that I think need to still be vetted out. Ultimately, folks, what we do here will have a great impact on whether or not we're able to convince communities to address this issue and the balance between affordable housing, the traffic impacts, and the like. And so I would urge you to take that into account. I recognize, as I said, that there are the votes today, but building community support is something that I believe is very important, especially when we're facing a city that does need to address the issue of housing, the issue of transportation and land use, but also the issue of including communities in determining what the character of those communities are and what projects will go ahead in those communities. Thank you.
Ms. Sikowski?
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, I appreciate the council's attention to this. We spent a lot of time on it last week. Prior to that, Mr. Reyes and his committee spent time on it, and prior to that, there were innumerable meetings in the community, not only on the global issues, but on absolutely and actually every of the items that Mr. Veragosa said need to be taken into account. And he's absolutely right, they need to be taken into account, and I believe they have been taken into account. There were changes that we were making as this evolved through each of the final stages, not only, as I say, on the global issue, and if we have any faith in our planning department and our planning processes to take environmental analysis, and take environmental analysis and update it, which has been done in Phase Two EIR based on the reality of Phase One, they just didn't say we're going to go into space and try it again. There is a reality check that has been done by both the Department of Transportation, the Planning Department, and others. Every one of the specific issues, on the issues of toxic gas and methane, we now have an ordinance we didn't have when Phase One came around. It's been implemented and done essentially on the backs of Playa Vista, because we have to do it there and we then have to do it everywhere else. We know there is a jobs-housing balance imbalance west side with a lot of jobs on the west side, very good-paying jobs, but not the housing, which contributes to our traffic mess. We need to have each community have integrity in itself. We need to recognize the open space and preserve that. Seventy percent of this land is preserved forever as open space, wetlands, and working through the parks and state agencies as to what and how those wetlands will be reinstated and upgraded from some of the degradation that has occurred. Members, last week, we discussed this, last week, we turned down the appeal on the track map, we approved the track map, we certified the EIR, and we, on first reading unanimously said the ordinance for the development agreement should go forward. Today, we have the second and last action on the development agreement, but this is not the end, it really is the beginning. We have neighborhood councils in the process relative to transportation monies that they have to work with in their own neighborhoods to go forward, to continue to take into account reality as to how they want to implement those monies to affect their neighborhoods. That's a given, that's what we put in the development agreement, that's what we put in the track map. So this is not the last hurrah. In fact, up to today, even on Phase One, we have had ongoing meetings with the Playa Vista developer, with the community, to implement those things that had been talked about in Phase One, as they need to be implemented with the communities. Similarly, this is going to be an ongoing partnership with all the city agencies, the state agencies, and the community at each stage of this development coming forward. We have things in here relative to parks, relative to active recreation areas, relative to monitoring and maintenance of all the methane, which reports have to come in annually, have to be consulted with the community, have to be consulted with a council member of the district, so that each stage, you have the checkpoint to make sure that taking into account will be a part of this plan through its final phases. So I do ask for an aye vote.
Mr. Reyes?
Thank you, Council President. I appreciate and acknowledge the concerns of my colleague regards to this plan, but I must share with you that since the early nineties, this project has had a strong focus from many stakeholders. It's gone through so many changes, through so many different visions, but ultimately in the end, we ended up with a balance. Ultimately, in the end, we ended up with a project and a process that continues to evolve. This is a living document, and through the leadership of Steve Soboroff and his team, they have shown, they have shown that they are listening. In the end, through my colleagues' role as Speaker of the Assembly, we were able to preserve a large, large area of open space. Through the leadership of Ruth Galanter, former council member, we were able to introduce technologies that talked about how you clean our water bodies, how you preserve natural habitats. And I ran into her last night, and she goes, "I heard you mentioning my name, I thought you were blaming me." I said, "Well, Ruth, let's stay positive here, I'm touting you as our role model." But the bottom line is, we have a project that we need to hold up as an example of how we can duplicate not only natural habitats, not only waterway cleanup programs, but also how you create environments for mixed-income communities, how you link into neighborhoods that require the kind of job development, job training programs that can be shared by all, the kind of environment where we're actually experimenting with vehicles that are run by electrical technology, the kind of environment where you have parks within parks, within a general park plan. So I ask you, what else can we have? And those would tell you, "Well, I'd rather have no development at all." Well, probably that's true for a lot of areas in the neighborhood, but the fact is, this city is going to multiply in population, we need to have these reality checks. As a council, we need to take on some of these hard issues, and I believe this particular project is not so hard because of the work that's been demonstrated by the planning department, the planning staff, and all the members of the city family to get to this point. So with that, I ask for an aye vote, and I'd like to move this item and conclude this process. Thank you.
Mr. Zine?
Thank you, Mr. President. I was not here last time this was up for discussion, I had another engagement that I had to attend, and I wanted to go on the record that I've personally visited Mr. Soboroff with that little electric car, took me through the complex, and I had a personal tour of the facility to see exactly what it is, what it involves. And as Councilman Reyes alluded to, increased population, there's definitely a tremendous traffic problem in the city of Los Angeles that we all see. When I travel from the valley every day, on the one parking lot, and many of you here this morning came from the San Fernando Valley, you know what the 101's like, the 405 to the west side, we have that same situation. But the reason I want to go on the record to show my support is I've seen the site, I've seen what has already been built out, I've seen the job-housing balance, I see how close that is to the west side, to Century City, to all of the industrial that we have on the west side of the city. And if we have all the folks on the east side work and live on the east side, and all the folks on the west side live and work on the west side, we can avoid this traffic gridlock that we have every single day. But it just seems that the folks on the west side work in the east, and the folks on the east side work in the west, and the folks on the north valley work in the south bay, and everybody's commuting back and forth, and then they commute back to their homes in the evening, and the commute's getting longer and longer and longer. What I look for is some peace and tranquility and equality of life. Clearly, that affords a quality of life. Clearly, that is a pristine area. Clearly, it's land that has been vacant for many, many years, and I remember living in that region a number of years ago, and wondered what they were going to do with that. It was just a block of land just sitting out there. I think it's been put to tremendous use, it's built very nice, quality residence. I know there's some commercial in there, but it affords an opportunity for people to have a quality of life and hopefully not have to commute great distances to the job where they earn their income and support the families. So I want to go publicly on the record, as I was not able to last time, and show my support for this. I know Councilman Sikowski spent a lot of time on it, Councilman Reyes spent a lot of time on it, the review that's been taking place for the last number of years has really sanitized this to make it a project that can be beneficial to the city of Los Angeles, and more jobs out there, more housing out there, relieve the massive gridlock and congestion we have on our local 405, 105, and all the freeways in this region. So I am a yes vote, Cindy, you did a great job on it, and I find it ironic, we're talking about this, and you've got an airplane wearing today. So it's appropriate, when we talk about travel, we talk about getting there in a quick period of time, we're not going to fly to that area, but we're going to drive in a hopefully safe, efficient, quality manner, in one of Mr. Garcetti's fuel-efficient hydro cars. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Are there members of the council wishing to be heard on this item? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Roll is open. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes, one no.
That is approved. Let's send that matter forthwith, please. And again, as we mentioned earlier, colleagues, Mr. Ludlow has some police department staff here on item forty-eight, that's Bureau of Engineering, my apologies, on item forty-eight, so let's take that up next, and then we'll return to general public comment.
The sewer police, the sewer police, we're coming in.[1499.35][1499.35](laughing)
You don't want to see the jail there either.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, we are on the brink of, I think, a real great city victory, and wanted to have an update today in council, I want to thank Councilmember Smith and his leadership on our Public Works Committee in helping us come to this point. The successful completion of the tunneling of the NOS ESIS line is at a magnitude that I think warranted a briefing from the department and our city engineer to give us a sense of what this project brings to LA, what it took to get where it is today. And a couple of things that I wanted to make note of is that this is one of the biggest, some of us have said "the biggest," but if not the biggest, one of the biggest infrastructure improvement projects from a tunneling aspect in the history of the country. And one of the things that comes to mind for me, and many of us remember the ninety-four earthquake, when we saw the images of the ten freeway collapse, what stood out in our mind was how fast the contractor was able to get that freeway not only reconstructed but reopened. And some of the same methodology in terms of craftsmanship and the way in which the project has been done, round-the-clock construction, has been initiated and implemented in this project. And what's amazing is when you will see the footage that they've brought here today, to know that this project was done around the clock with almost no interruption to community flow. There has been some, it's unmistakable, that there has been some disruptions here and there, but when you look at the magnitude of this project and how massive it is and the technology that's been utilized, to know that everyday life has been able to continue throughout residential and retail communities, commercial communities, it's just a real tribute. And so we've asked the staff to come forward, give us a briefing, and then after the briefing, obviously, I'm hopeful that there'll be some questions, and we'd like to make just a couple of acknowledgements of many of the city employees that played a role in making this project come to fruition. So with that, I look forward to this briefing and hope you find this informative. Our chief engineer?
Thank you. Councilman Ludlow, it's allowing us to be here to, what I think, share a fantastic project, a legacy project, as Commissioner Valerie Shaw said at board on Monday. And the photo you're looking at, and before I start, I want to introduce two people who were instrumental. I have Tracy Minamidi, Assistant Director from the Bureau of Sanitation, with me, also John Reamer, the Inspector of Public Works from the Bureau of Contract Administration. The photo you're looking at is, this is an eleven-foot diameter sewer that you're looking at, and the people in the photo are three of the Bureau of Engineering surveyors, and it gives you a magnitude of what an eleven-foot diameter sewer looks like. And the photo was taken by an excellent engineer, our Chief Deputy City Engineer, Brad Smith. The good news is, is the East Central Interceptor Sewer, the ESIS project, is in operation. It went into operation on August ninth, and it's flowing perfectly. And you cannot talk about a sewer without a little bit of jokes through here, so I'll try not to be too crude here. We'd like to just share a couple slides with you. This project took twelve years, and appropriately, we have twelve slides. This project began, oh, in nineteen ninety-four, about ten, twelve years ago here. And it really began because when you rebuild a sewer system, you have to start from the bottom up, and it all flows downhill, gravity is a wonderful thing, and it ends up at Hyperion. And Hyperion, we started with a ten-mile stretch of the sewer system that went up into the Baldwin Hills area and was completed in nineteen ninety-one. Following that, the Bureau of Sanitation Engineering got together and started planning Following that, the Bureau of Sanitation Engineering got together and started planning this wonderful project. And we started planning it, and there was a little, we ran into some environmental concerns. In 1998, we had the terrible El Nino flood situation, where we actually had overflows in the south Los Angeles area. The Regional Water Quality Control Board at that time helped motivate the city just a little bit by giving us a cease and desist order and ordered us to complete seven projects, ESIS being the largest. We're currently in construction on what we call the NICE, the Northeast Interceptor Sewer, and that'll be done in December of 2005. And with the Eagle Rock Interceptor Sewer, which will be done not that, right at the same time also. It's hard to see in the map here, but the ESIS project starts in Baldwin Hills and runs all the ways to Seventh and the LA River. As I mentioned, whenever you do a project like this, it takes a lot of work. This was an eight-year project in design. A person probably the most happiest today is our project manager, who started on this project 12 years ago, Baron Mia. And during the course of this project, and there was 350 city employees involved in this project, we also assisted by the design firm of Parsons Brinkerhoff Quaid and Douglas, who joined us at our offices. In 1999, the Environmental Impact Report was approved by the city council. And I think what was landmark about this was the amount of community outreach that was done on this project. It was by far, and still is, our biggest community outreach on any project we've done. And it's great to be here to celebrate. Couple of facts about ESIS. Construction began on, appropriately, Valentine's Day of 2001, and it's, it was and still is the largest project at $240 million ever awarded by the Board of Public Works. What you're looking at in the photo is called a tunnel boring machine. You can see people are dwarfed by the size of this machine. There was four of them. This is the largest concentration of tunnel boring machines ever in the history of the United States. Unlike, or like hurricanes, I should say, we also name our tunnel boring machines, and this one was named Sonia after the manufacturer's daughter. When it comes to tunneling, most, most people who work on tunnel projects go from location to location. They don't really, you don't hire from the local. But under the leadership of this council and the mayor and the Board of Public Works, a project labor agreement was in place on this project. And out of the over 1,000 employee, 1,000 contractor employees that worked on this, a third of them were from Los Angeles. And we definitely want to thank our partner, the many unions that, that brought the talent to this project. When we talk about interruptions, we did have some above-ground work, and you're looking at in this photo, one of the sites of the construction sites. Two were in Council District 10, in Councilman Ludlow's. We had two in Jan Perry's, Councilwoman Perry's district, and one in Councilman Villarreal's district. Once again, we couldn't have done this without the support of the residents. They were unbelievably cooperative. And when you have all these trucks and equipment rolling through your neighborhoods, we couldn't have asked for anybody better. Tunneling, 70 feet below the ground was where this was happening on an average, and it went down as low as 200 feet in the Baldwin Hills area. Sewers are usually in the main road and in the street, and like the, we couldn't do all that in this, and so we had to come underneath private property. And our city attorney and our real estate division in the bureau was invaluable to making sure this happened. Also, one feat that is amazing here is that the contractor, with the assistance of our Bureau of Contract Administration and our surveyors, when we were all done, there was only 21 millimeters difference of where this was planned and where it ended up after 11 miles. Safety and quality, I think it's very important to mention here that this was one of the safest construction projects. When we were in design, there was a big concern, one of our subway projects had a lot of problems, and people were very concerned. And this project, I'm glad to say, was an extremely safe project. And that, that safety and management of the safety and onsite goes to John Reamer and his staff in the Bureau of Contract Administration. His inspectors are there every day, every minute, working with the contractor. Diverting flow. In this photo here, you'll see, that is not water. That is our good old friend, the sewage, flowing down the pipe there. That was a happy day for about 1,000-plus people or 1,500 people that have worked on this project on August 9th. It, it was flawless. In this system, there's two 60-foot waterfalls, and it's, it's amazing, the underground infrastructure that it took to build this. Community outreach. Once again, as I, in the photo, you'll see Hughle Hauser there, who came out and did a one-hour special called "Under LA." We had over 1,000 calls to our 24-hour hotline, looking for jobs and information. We attended hundreds of community meetings. We educated 14,000 grade school students, and we sent residents, 45,000 of them, mailings to keep them informed of what was going on. Once again, the community outreach topped anything we had thought we had seen in the past, and they were tremendous, and what a partner. I also definitely want to thank the contractor for his incredible work on this project, and they have been tremendous. Kenny Shea, Trailer Frontier, Kemper, Joint Venture, Ted Budd is the construction manager for them. And on the final slide, it just, as we've mentioned here, it was an extreme partnership with the Bureau of Engineering, our consultants who supplemented our work, along with Construction, Contract Administration, the contractor with the major suppliers. And finally, we hope that in 100 years from now, the city engineer is back telling you about the new sewer and that the Bureau of Sanitation, we wish them best of luck in the operation. Thank you, Councilman Ludlow.
Thank you, Mr. President. There, there are a few things that, that I just wanted to add in. I want to thank our city engineer again. This is an amazing project. He outlined many of the accomplishments in a very short period of time. But again, colleagues, as you begin to look at many of the sewer improvement projects throughout your community, and as the community is watching some of these projects unfold throughout the city, this is a real tribute to the work of city workers. I wanted to acknowledge Baron Mia, John Reamer, Chris Smith, Tracy Minamidi, Ted Budd, and Dick Sloss, and also the Board of Public Works. There are a couple of other folks that, that weren't mentioned. I did want to appreciate Jan Perry and Mark Ridley Thomas. As many of you remember, Mark Ridley Thomas was very engaged in this early on. But the key things that came out with the issue of jobs, not just the jobs that were involved in the project, but what this does for economic development in the future. We were suffering, as you know, from serious infrastructure problems in south Los Angeles. You mentioned the, the storms. Environmental justice doesn't have a better spokesperson than this footage right here. If we want to see the types of changes in the communities that have long endured some of these devastating aftermaths after heavy rains, this is the kind of project that we needed to do. It was a gutsy project, and I really appreciate you being here today. So just a couple of fun things. He mentioned it's hard to not do this without a little bit of humor, but I did want to mention that you wasted no time. We appreciate that. You're providing great relief to the community. And we'd like to invite all of you to come out to the Big Splash tomorrow. The Big Splash will be at, at, what's the address? We got the address right here. Tomorrow at 9:30, the program begins at 10:00, the ESIS mission, mission site at Jesse Shaft Site, 2155 East Seventh Street. And it'll be an opportunity for all the contractors and all the board members and everyone that played a big role. But before we do that, can all the city workers that were involved in this project just stand up? All the city workers that are here, let's give them a round of applause. You guys did a great, great job. Excellent, excellent work. Outstanding, they're in the back. Again, we really, really appreciate this, and the community is thrilled, and we're so excited about letting it flow starting tomorrow. So thank you so much, council, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Are there members wishing to be heard on this item? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. And Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also wanted to acknowledge Mary Dennis for all the hard work she did on the eminent domain actions that were attached to the ESIS project.
Okay. Thank you very much. We now turn to general public comment for today's meeting, an opportunity for members of the public to address the council on matters within our jurisdiction but not appearing on today's agenda. And let me call forward as a group, Luis Valdez, Candido Mendoza Santana, Miguel Angel Perez, Maria Gonzalez, Jesus Barza Macias, and then Duke Russell will follow.
Buenos dias. Es que vengo a hablar aquí por un terreno que nos, que queremos, porque semos campesinos y queremos luchar. Semos mexicanos y estamos sembrándole allí fruto de la tierra. Y... Maria Gonzalez.
Good morning. My name is Maria Gonzalez. We're here to talk to you about land, a land that we want. It's a land that we, where we farm. And we're Mexicans, we're fighters, and we're workers.
Semos campesinos y queremos luchar por la tierra. Y, y aquí estamos y no nos vamos. Y estamos en una compañía muy bonita, muy agradable, son muy interesantes para mí porque hemos hecho mucho por, por la tierra.
We're farmers, and we're here to tell you that we're here and we're not leaving. We're surrounded by very nice company. We farm the land. It's something very nice and very adequate, that we really enjoy working on this piece of land.
Y yo apoyo a toda mi compañía y en principalmente a Don Miguel. A Don Miguel. Y gracias porque estoy aquí unidas pidiendo el apoyo. Y me siento muy contenta con todos mis campesinos, con todos los que nos apoyan. Y gracias por todo, porque yo sé nomás español, en inglés no sé nada.
I also want to tell you that I support my colleague, Miguel. I'm very happy with all the work that's being done there. I'm very happy with all the cooperation from all my farmer colleagues. And I want to tell you that even though I don't speak English, I only speak Spanish, we're here, and we're very thankful for the support that we received.
Okay.
For the record, one more time, Miguel Angel Perez, Los Angeles Coalition. It's expressed on a weekly basis here, the feelings of the South Central farmers, but not only just the South Central farmers, but farmers in general in California and North America, Central America, and Mexico. It's important to also understand that farmers are not going to go away, that people who work the land, till the land, and also help reap the land for the benefits of all are not going away. City Council of Los Angeles is also responsible to support and understand the feelings of farmers in general and all for the world. Again, one more time, aquí estamos y no nos vamos. Tierra libertad.
Mr. Russell.
Good morning. President Padilla, members of the council, my name is Duke Russell. I am a member of the Board of Directors, Hollywood High School Alumni Association, and an alumnus of Los Angeles City College, where I played baseball on a beautiful 75-year-old Snyder Field, which was destroyed this year for an asphalt parking lot. Councilmembers Tom LeBonde and Bernard Parks played football on that beautiful field. Yesterday, on the campus of LACC, I was there with Tom LeBonde. It was a huge celebration for the 75-year birthday of Los Angeles City College. Various politicians spoke, and others, too. A female student sang beautifully. The band was great. They played Duke Ellington's "Immortal, Take the A-Train," one of my favorites when I was growing up. When Tom LeBonde spoke, he waved his report cards at the students, faculty, and others. The crowd laughed when he named two subjects with a W next to them, which meant withdrawal. They also laughed when he said, "I got a C in public speaking." But he told them of some good grades, too, and he praised his teachers and his family. He praised his teacher by name, who was there. And he said he got an A, very proudly, in football, and the crowd cheered. He said because of his parents and LACC, he has become a member of the city council. He said all students can become successful through education at LACC, even becoming a member of the city council.
Mr. Russell, may I ask you to conclude, please?
Yes, I'll do it right now. Then Tom mentioned the Berlin Wall. He mentioned President John Kennedy, who wanted freedom for the people of Berlin. And then Tom said President Reagan said, "Tear down that wall." And then Tom turned towards the huge, ugly, commercial golf driving range, raised his arm, and said, "Tear down that golf range." And so I hope the city council will do something about it. I've made 14 speeches before the Board of Trustees, and it's time to tear down that wall. Thank you, Tom. It was marvelous.
Thank you very much. This concludes general public comment for today's meeting. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President. Item number one was called special regard from the public, and there is also an amending motion that has been distributed.
Okay, members, item number one now before us, and we have Mr. Jim McQuiston, followed by John Sottili.
Jim, Jim McQuiston, East Hollywood Community Association. This particular street is practically an alley, and it's between two giant hospitals. There is plenty of circulation in the area otherwise, and there is a problem with the hospital security. So we do support this closing, although, as you know, last week or so, I was violently opposed to closing streets that the public uses. This one, the public does use, but it doesn't have to use it, and we strongly support this
Yes, John Sottili, Children's Hospital. I think the record is pretty clear, and the motion is complete. Would like to thank Councilmember Garcetti and Councilmember Smith's office and the staff at the city for guiding us through this process, and we are here in support of the, of the closure.
Thank you very much. This concludes the public comment for item number one. Members of the council wishing to be heard, thank Mr. Garcetti. Did he want to say a few words? Should we hold it for him? Let's go ahead and hold it for him. He should be back momentarily. So don't go away. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item number two was called special by Councilmember LeBonde.
Mr. LeBonde, item number two. Hold on, Mr. LeBonde, before you say anything, Mr. Garcetti's back. Item number one.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, today we have before us, there's an amending motion, just with some technical corrections, and thank you, Mr. Smith, for seconding this. But I wanted to call this special just because we all know, I think, what a treasure we have in the city with Children's Hospital, probably the finest children's hospital in this country. And at times when other hospitals are having to shut down, cut back service, they're in the same place of a lot of hurt of not getting the reimbursements from health care, but they continue to serve this entire, not only city, but this region in an incredibly impressive way. I wanted to thank them for their ongoing presence in this city, in Council District 13. And if you haven't driven by recently, you should see their ambitious capital improvement projects, whether it's the Saban Medical Research Building that went up, that we had the ribbon cutting for, I believe it was last year, and then now the, the modernization of the main facility. This will be an important part of vacating the street that's between them and Hollywood Presbyterian, in what's kind of a health care row there along Sunset Boulevard and on Vermont. And this is going to be a critical piece of this. I ask for your support. I want to thank Alison Becker and my staff for her good, hard work on this, and also for the Children's Hospital for their continuing vigilance and service in our community. So with that, I ask you to please pass the amended 1A. Thank you.
Okay. Any objections to taking up 1A? Mr. LeBonde.
I just want to thank Mr. Garcetti, what you said about Children's Hospital and the importance of it, because it serves not just Los Angeles, but all of Southern California. My family and I live just very close to it, and often there's helicopters coming, any time of the day or night, getting to those great doctors, those great staff, those great nurses there to help the children of this region. And I think what you're doing there, Eric, is very important because you're helping make that, what was once envisioned and a great plan in this city is a solid hospital row there. So thank you for your leadership, Eric. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. LeBonde. If there's no other members wishing to be heard, let's open the roll, including 1A without objection. Mr. Reyes, did you wish to speak? Mr. Reyes, did you wish to speak? Okay, roll is open at item number one. Let's close the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That is approved. Mr. Reyes? Okay. We now come to item number two, called special by Mr. LeBonde.
Now we go.
All right.
I was waiting for that number two acknowledgement. Colleagues, Council President, item number two is a report that comes from my committee. I rise to, one, urge your support of this recommendation relative to the Windsor Square Historic Preservation Overday Zone. I just want to share with you, in committee, we had a very emotional hearing. We heard both sides. I believe both sides are very eloquent in their position as to their reasons for supporting or going against this particular effort. But I got to share with you, colleagues, that Councilman LeBonde's staff did an admirable job, as well as Councilman Tom LeBonde, in how they were able to try achieve, try to achieve a balance. We went through a series of discussions, reviewed a map. We were able to see how the different stakeholders were posturing the issue. And quite frankly, we had to kind of weed out through what was legitimate, what wasn't in terms of who was supporting this particular effort. But the kind of work that was displayed, the language that was used, the need to preserve this area was pretty evident. But again, this is an issue that I believe has a lot of emotion to it, and I urge this body to support the Plum Committee report. And I just want to thank my colleague, Councilman LeBonde, for his hard work, his staff's hard work in going through such a tough process. But I believe they were diligent and went through all the necessary steps to try to get to that balancing point. Thank you.
Mr. LeBonde.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes and your committee, and your members of your committee, Mr. Curtis, Mr. Weiss. Mr. President, could we have a five-minute public hearing for both sides? Several members of the community who have strong feelings of, would want to express themselves, and I would like to ask, we have a five-minute public hearing.
Okay. Members, is there any objection to reopening the public hearing on this item? If not, then Madam Clerk, can I please ask you to put up a five-minute clock, and we'll hear from, right. So we'll hear first from people who are against the proposal, and then we'll hear from people who are for the proposal, for a total of five minutes. So let me just call the public's attention to this five-minute clock that's about to appear up here. That's where I'm going to go by. So when the five minutes are up, I'm going to cut off that side of public comment. I'd ask everybody for their brevity, and if there's a particular speaker who takes up a whole lot of time, that just means that less people on that side of the argument get to speak. So please be cognizant of that. The first speaker will be Laura Krista, followed by Camila Schaefer, Anthony Guida, Lawrence Jackson, and James Hamm. If you would all please come forward and form a line behind the podium. Okay, the five-minute clock, please. Go ahead.
Don't start that clock, is it? Can you hear me? My name is Laura Krista. I want to thank the council members for the opportunity to speak on behalf of the Windsor Square No HPOZ Alliance. I'm a resident of Windsor Square. I've been a litigator in Los Angeles for almost 25 years, and last night I took a look at the HPOZ ordinance. The HPOZ ordinance in its current form requires that 75% of the homeowners sign that they are in favor of an HPOZ, and that has to be certified by the City Planning Commission. That didn't happen here. I do believe, and our group does believe, in the wisdom of that 75%, because you require 75% of residents and house homeowners on a street to permit permit parking. You require 75% of homeowners to require speed bumps on a street. You require 80% of homeowners on a block to agree if you're going to have filming after 10. You ought to require the 75% that's in the ordinance in this situation. We don't have 75% in this neighborhood who approve or are in favor of an HPOZ. At the City Planning Commission, Mr. LeBonde's able, Planning Deputy Renee Whitezer testified and put into evidence that there were 47% of homeowners in the area that had expressed positive opinions. So what we did was, we took a map of Windsor Square, and we noted where those 47 homes were, based on the councilman's information. If you look, you see in blue those homeowners that the council member says are the 47% that are in favor of an HPOZ. And the red are all the rest. In everything that I've read about the history and meaning and purpose of an HPOZ, there's been a requirement that there be consensus in the neighborhood. The law is that it has to be 75%, and the evidence is that there is no consensus, and that far from having a majority, or 75%, there's a minority. Now, very quickly, because we have very little time, who are these people that don't want the HPOZ? They are people that are in favor of preservation. They are people that want objective rules to prevent mansionization, that you can't build out bigger than a certain part of your lot. They are people that don't want teardowns, but they want objective rules. They are also people who are not worried about design decisions of their increasingly diverse group of neighbors, people who want to have design decisions based somewhat on Feng Shui or other considerations. They're concerned about the possibility of freezing this neighborhood, having Stepford Homes, something they call state police. All we're saying is that in the absence of 75%, in the absence of even a majority, why would this city council impose an HPOZ on Windsor Square?
Mr. President and council members, I'm Larry Jackson. I live in the neighborhood. I don't have any personal interest in this, not planning to change my home and be subject to this, but this is a burdensome law, and I oppose it for that reason. I think the example from Miracle Mile North, which is an existing HPOZ, residents there are unhappy with it, there is no clear exit strategy, and we would suggest that Councilmember Weiss could address that for the rest of the members of the council. This ordinance need not be adopted at this time until the citywide ordinance is changed so that there is an exit strategy, and that should wait until that happens. This also, we believe, should be something where if it is put in, it should have a requirement that it be reaffirmed by the community every several years or five years to make sure that we don't have a Miracle Mile North situation. Lastly, council members, I ask you to think about this, it's not just a district issue. This involves a budget issue. There's a proposal here to create another staff position at a time when we don't have enough money for adequate police protection. And I wonder how we can sleep at night when the next mother of someone who's murdered on our streets wonders why there aren't enough police, and instead we spent the money to police the window sizes in Windsor Square on the mansions. Thank you.
I'm Anthony Guida. I'm a professor in the Department of Architecture, Landscape, and Interiors at Otis College. I teach architecture history, and I teach architectural design at USC, at UCLA, and at Otis. I see the proposed HPOZ as a misguided attempt to preserve neighborhood character by assigning historic significance to a very large number of homes that are merely old. The period revival styles that the historic survey identifies don't correspond to officially recognized historic styles or architectural design movements. The neighborhood is largely a mixed bag of loosely interpreted architectural styles that are by and large skin deep, decorative ornamentation applied to the exteriors of buildings or builder homes from the 20s through the 50s. The proposed HPOZ seeks to freeze this neighborhood in time in order to preserve a great quantity of buildings that are of rather limited architectural and historic quality.
Thank you. The final card submitted on the, oh, well, that's a general comment, Mr. James Hamm, he didn't indicate whether he was for or against the proposal. Is Mr. Hamm here?
Yes.
All right. Then that is the time having expired for those who were against the proposal. I will now call those who are in support of the proposal and ask the clerk to reset the clock for the same five minutes. We'll begin with Carolyn Ramsey, who will be followed by Margaret Hudson, Mary Pickard, and Ken Bernstein. Could you all please come forward and line up so we can use your time most efficiently?
Hello, my name is Carolyn Ramsey. I'm the president of the Windsor Square Association. All of the people behind me are in support of this proposal. We have all worked together. The neighborhood has demonstrated considerable patience and tenacity, and also a lot of negotiation in working out a plan that we really feel suits this neighborhood. This neighborhood, the Getty House is in our neighborhood, the Chandler House is in our neighborhood. A recent story in the LA Times said four presidents, US presidents, stayed there. The Melvene House was moved to the neighborhood, presumably because people felt as though it would be preserved in Windsor Square. The Van Nuys House is there. The history of Los Angeles is contained in these homes. That's why the neighbors, present and past, want to preserve it. We really appreciate the support of the council office, and Plum, and the Planning Commission, and the Cultural Heritage Commission, they all voted unanimously for this HPOZ. And we thank the planning staff, and also the neighbors, past and present. Thank you for your support of this.
Would any of the other speakers who I called, Margaret Hudson, Mary Pickard, or Ken Bernstein, like to speak?
My name is Margaret Hudson, and I thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm president of the Windsor Square Preservation Advocacy Group, and I want to express my appreciation to the City Planning Department, and especially to Council District Four, Renee Whitezer, and Tom, and Jonathan Brand, for all of their help in this very thorough, open, and honest process. As all of us sit or stand in this exquisitely beautiful room of architecture, I want you to reflect on Windsor Square, which was built around the same time. And the same people that had the vision to preserve and restore this beautiful room and this building, we're trying to do that here, so we look for your vote in favor of preserving Windsor Square. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Mary Pickard. I'm the chair of the Preservation Committee for the Windsor Square Association. I just want to, again, thank our council office for shepherding us through this long, four-year process to discern whether or not we should have an HPOZ for Windsor Square. That process is what built consensus and what brought everyone here today, so I encourage you to support the proposal and help preserve one of the great treasures in Los Angeles. Thank you.
I'm Ken Bernstein with the Los Angeles Conservancy, and I wanted to say what I said at a couple of the previous hearings, that if Windsor Square is not an HPOZ in the city of Los Angeles, I don't know what neighborhood in the city is. This is a neighborhood that has an extraordinary high concentration of historic homes. 89% of the homes in this area meet the test of being contributors to this HPOZ. And from a citywide perspective, very few neighborhoods are at risk as this neighborhood, given real estate pressures, escalating prices, the teardown mania that we see throughout our city and in neighboring cities. The only question is whether there's a consensus, appropriate consensus, to move forward. Councilman LeBonde and his staff have worked tirelessly to check and double-check that there is, in fact, an adequate consensus. The planning staff can respond to the issue that was raised, about 75%. That is not correct. That is not a provision in the ordinance, and your staff, I'm sure, can clarify that. We urge you to move forward with this today, and then the creation of a preservation plan for this community will help create further consensus and allow this community to go forward and preserve its historic homes in a way that benefits the entire city. We urge your support.
There's still more time here for Michael Cornwell, Pamela Reed, Murray Burns.
Thank you, council. And just briefly, when you approve this, hopefully, and goes to the mayor forthwith, hopefully, this will be the 20th HPOZ in the city of Los Angeles. As you know, the HPOZ started in the great first council district, Angelino Heights, in 1983. Murray Burns was here to support this, there's Murray, he's an historic figure himself in the city. And we've learned a lot since 1983 of how to manage and really work with HPOZs, and that's been very important, and that has helped Windsor Square to move this ahead. It's only taken three, four, five, six, no, six years. That's a neighborhood council, we're still working on that. But in any event, we appreciate your support, and I hope this will be the 20th HPOZ. Third Street School is here today, as you know, ironically, there in Hancock Park, which hopefully will be the 21st HPOZ. But Windsor Square residents also attend Third Street School, and we thank you for your time today, and let's move this forthwith, hopefully. Thank you.
Sorry, I think we have five seconds left. You okay with the, okay. Thank you. We do have a stack of cards, I think, from many of you that are present, and appreciate you being here today. Our first speaker on the queue is Councilmember Reyes, followed by Councilmember LeBonde.
Madam President, I just wanted to ask the staff to come to the table. I want to clarify, 75% for the record.
Charlie Roush, Planning Department staff. The language of the municipal code is in Section 1220, which states, "On a private application," which would be an application coming from the community, "an HPOZ shall not be prepared for a proposed preservation zone until such an application is verified by the planning department to contain signatures of at least 75% of the owners or lessees within the proposed district." That is not the approval of 75% of the owners of the properties, and that is only on a private application.
So in this case, this particular program was initiated by the council office?
This particular program, Bob Sutton for Planning, this particular program was initiated originally by Councilman John Ferraro, and in that situation, 75% is not required for initiation, and there's no requirement, as Charlie indicated, in the code requiring 75%. Council generally looks for a strong majority.
Okay, just want to make sure we clarify that point for the record, as I want to thank you, both gentlemen, for your hard work on this.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes, and staff, Councilmember LeBonde.
Thank you, members, and thank everyone for coming down on both sides on this issue here. As mentioned by Mr. Sutton, this was initiated originally by my predecessor, John Ferraro, who was the first councilperson in the city to initiate an HPOZ, which is now in the first district, used to be in the fourth district on Angelino Heights. And I had the honor of working for John and seeing that that HPOZ got implemented. The second was Melrose Hill, which is in Mr. Garcetti's district. John's district was a little different back then, and that was implemented. And now we're up to 19. And members, I got to ask for your support of this. Your support of this, because it's real important, I believe, to preserve what is unique to our city, is the neighborhoods. And this is a very unique neighborhood. And I look to the east of this neighborhood, and I see what transpired over the years, over the years, it transpired, and we lost that. But what's interesting about our city, absolutely in every neighborhood in all of our districts now, there's rebirth in these neighborhoods. And I hope, as a councilperson, for the time that I'm honored to serve, that the future sees what is present here today. And I know, because of this size and the work, that this effort of this planning department has flexibility in there. There's some people who don't want to see any regulation at all. And I'm glad someone like Laura commented, everyone is supportive of preservation. It's how that we get there. My job is now to be, make sure that we do it right, that when we implement this, if I do have all your support, that when we implement this, that we do it right, that we get the right balance of people who can listen, that this deals with the front facades of homes. It doesn't deal with inside the homes, but it deals with the front facades. So that character that we all love about neighborhoods is remained and stabilized and supported for years to come. I thank each and every one of you for this, and I greatly appreciate the efforts of Ed Reyes, again, as chair, and your members, and I also want to especially say thank you to Renee Whitezer, who many of the public, as an elected official, and citizens from both sides of the aisle. Renee has the great honor of serving this city for many years. Renee, you're very special in trying to get the right formula to make successful on this. I thank you, Renee. Members, I call for an eye vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. LeBonde. Mr. Reyes?
Just a short... Just a short observation. In this motion, you will note that there's a request to look at the staffing issues. As these historic overlay zones continue to proliferate, our staffing has not. If anything, it's been cut back. Our ability to serve and implement will be severely compromised, in my mind, when you look at all of the requests from the neighborhood councils, from our planners, from the different area planning commissions, from the commission citywide, and now the nineteenth historic overlay zone. The staff has not increased in proportion to the demand. And we're going to be feeling it. And when we talk about our ability to impact one of our greatest influences in our land use discretion, our ability to support and inform the community will continue to be compromised. So colleagues, I know we have a lot of pressures, but we need to put that on the table. And that's something we really need to engage in our budget and finance process. But I just wanted to make sure I made that strong statement on behalf of our staff who's working diligently. And believe me, they're at a point where we're going to start losing people because of the burden and the strain on the staff. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. City Clerk, the item is before us. Call the roll. Tabulate the votes.
Twelve ayes.
That item is approved. Next item.[688.69][688.69](APPLAUSE) Yes, Ms. Miskowski and then Mr. Labange, quick question.
Madam President, can we take item nineteen out of order? I'd also like to move a limited public hearing on that item.
Forthwith on the last one.
Thank you, forthwith. Unless there is any dissent, we will move item nineteen to the front of the items here. Ms. Miskowski, how long of a public hearing would you like?
Let's also move a five-minute hearing on both sides. I'm not sure we'll need it entirely. But could the items, the members who are here on Archer School, please come forward? We're moving a five-minute public hearing on each side. And I believe that we should probably start with Mr. Renee from the Brentwood Homeowners Association.
Madam President?
Yes, Ms. Miskowski.
With the permission of Ms. Miskowski, if we could take forty-five and forty-six now, because I had no intention of speaking on it, I just wanted to vote no on the one item. And the other item, the CAO has adequately explained to me. So if we could just get those out of the way, I know DWP staff is here and they'd like to get back to their offices.
Okay. And Mr. Labange?
We have forty-seven on there as well. I had one. So...
Okay. So I think we'll go with forty-five and forty-six and go nineteen and then we'll go to forty-seven. You're all jumping up. Yes, Ms. Zine?
Well, I have a concern. As long as we don't lose a quorum, because I have a matter that is time-sensitive, item eighteen. We have people here from the valley on that item. And if we can maintain the quorum, I don't have any problem holding. But if we're going to lose a quorum, then we need to do something with it.
Okay.
Because we're time-sensitive. I don't know if we're time-sensitive on these other matters, but we are on item eighteen.
Okay. Right.
Nineteen is a time-sensitive today.
How about yours, Greg?
No, mine are just going through.
He's going through. So we're just going to have a five-minute on both sides of Ms. Miskowski's and then we'll move on your item as well, Mr. Zine.
Mr. Smith has asked to vote. So let's call forty-six and a vote.
No, just talking about your side. But we're only going to have a five-minute on both sides and then have that item go forward.
So we'll maintain a quorum from the...
I'll stay.
I think for the next fifteen minutes, we should be able to do that.
Okay, great. Thank you. I don't want to disappoint these folks that travel all the way here. Thank you.
So we will now call item number forty-five. Call the roll. Tabulate the votes.
Twelve ayes.
Twelve ayes. Item number forty-six.
No, Madam President, request, City Attorney, that we recess and go to the special agenda item for those...
She told me I had to go fast, right?
City Attorney instructed us to do this for those items on the special.
We're not on the special agenda.
No, we're not there.
But I'm asking to go to the special agenda, because twelve members are going to leave.
Okay. Let's do forty-six first and then we'll go to the next item. Item number forty-six, please call the roll. Tabulate the votes.
Twelve ayes.
Okay. Let's, yes, we're fine. Thank you. We will try that again. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the votes.
Eleven ayes, one no.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Now, we will, Mr. Labange is asking for a special item, which you're concerned that we will not have twelve. So we would recess the regular agenda and move to the special agenda. Mr. City Attorney?
Cardenas Garcetti, Grulhan, Labange, Labange Miskowski, Parks Perry, Reyes Smith. We were going to say, "Why sign for the year?" Twelve members present in a quorum, Madam President.
Okay. Thank you, Madam City Clerk. I see no one on the speaker queue. We would like to, on that item...
Madam President, our items one and two are going to be taken together?
Sure. Is that all right?
Say it again.
Items number one and item number two taken together. Thank you. So we will call the roll on items one and two. Tabulate the votes.
Twelve ayes.
Those items are approved. We will...
Forthwith.
Forthwith. And we will go back to the, you're very welcome. You're just, you want to make it fun up here. Okay. We will now go back to the regular agenda and go to item number nineteen. And we will go for a five-minute public hearing on both sides. I do only have three cards, Ms. Miskowski. The first is Donna Black, Robert Renee, and Arlene Hogan. If you could please come to the front.
Mr. Renee, please, if you're there, go ahead. Any of you may speak first.
Thank you. My name is Robert Renee. I am the president of the Brentwood Homeowners, represent thirty-eight hundred homes, one of the oldest and most active homeowner groups in Los Angeles. We appealed the Archer decision to the Plum and are here to urge the council to consider the same. Before I give brief comments, irrespective of the outcome, I would like to thank Councilwoman Miskowski and Kevin Keller in the Councilwoman's office for their attention to this matter. First, I would like to make clear what this is not about. It is not about NIMBY. It is not about anti-growth. And it is certainly not about anti-school. This is about a written agreement and the will and the trust of the community. Through litigation, negotiation, and ultimate compromise, about five years ago, the city and community exchanged one of the finest parcels of land for two promises from Archer School in writing. The first was community involvement in any changes. And the second was an accord in writing not to ask for expansion of Archer School for ten years. Yet, five years later, despite breaches of many CUP provisions, without any bona fide community involvement, Archer has been granted a fifteen percent increase in its student body. Frankly, the community is up in arms and voted unanimously to appeal this decision. This modification breaks a written accord with the community. More importantly, it risks greatly diminishing the people's trust in the CUP process and in the city land use process. We believe it also violates environmental law. Let us make clear that the community is very willing to work toward a compromise which affords Archer its expansion so long as it is reasonable and includes the community. Especially given this willingness, we respectfully urge the council to delay the decision and give the people, the city, and the City Attorney time once again to craft a reasonable compromise. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That is the only speaker against the proposal. The following two speakers have indicated they are for the proposal. So we will go to the, have completed on this five minutes. So the next, Donna Black and then Arlene Hogan.
Thank you. I'm Arlene Hogan. Thank you. In securing its CUP, Archer made one-point-five million dollars in street improvements on Sunset, gave up a strip of land to the city as a bus pullout, landscaped an extensive portion of Chaparral Street, accepted fifty-two conditions of operation, engaged in forty-eight meetings with the neighbors. Over the past three years, the school has had the opportunity to prove that it can be a good neighbor and is, in fact, respected in the area and is held up as an example of a school whose CUP works. Presently, with a three-point-five AVR required, the school is four-point-nine-four AVR. Inbound morning trips, which were required at two-hundred, are at ninety-one. And busing, which was required at fifty percent, is at eighty-six percent, a record for any school. If Archer is granted the increased enrollment of five-eighteen, even if all sixty-eight students were to drive separately to the school, which is impossible under the school law, it would still not exceed any of the conditions of the CUP. Archer will continue to do its best to keep its relationship with the neighbors as untarnished as possible. And we are willing, we have showed in the past and will continue to show, to work forward in the best interest of the school and the neighborhood of Brentwood. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker, Donna Black.
Thank you. I have no comments in addition to Ms. Hogan.
Thank you. Your brevity is appreciated. Our next, so the public hearing is now closed. And our first speaker on the queue is Councilmember Miskowski, followed by Councilmember Reyes.
Thank you, Madam President. Members, a lot of you have heard about Archer School. And the reason you've heard about Archer School, it was a very, very traumatic application, as we know many of the private schools can be. But many of you around this horseshoe, and I can tell you, every one of your planning deputies knows about Archer School, because when you have a school case in your district, you call my office and say, "What are the conditions that you set for Archer School?" Because that is the model, that is the one that has worked well, that is the one that was the toughest to get through as a new school. How did you do it and what should we be doing? The reason Archer is here today is because when we put the Archer School in place, we said, after one year of Archer being in place, it has to come back through a public hearing, a public process, and an ability to adjust the conditions if they're not working quite right or either or both sides want to talk about that. They did that and that worked. We also said in the Archer School, they had to come back after three years of operation, again, just to measure how they're doing and adjust the rules if need be. That's what we have before us today, that three-year review. In reviewing it, you just heard, Archer is a school of four-hundred-and-fifty students. That was what was allowed. They were allowed two-hundred car trips total, teacher, everybody, bringing those four-hundred-and-fifty students to school. What is their car trip annually now? Ninety-one. Ninety-one inbound trips where they were given two-hundred. They were told that they had to achieve in those cars, an average vehicle ridership, that is, how many people in the car of three in each one of those cars? You just heard them today saying they've achieved four-point-nine-four, almost five-person per vehicle. And they had to achieve fifty percent busing. They've got seventy percent coming in by bus. It's within those parameters, which said that at four-fifty, as we looked at their conditions, they said, "You know, if we have a modest adjustment up to five-hundred, just so that we can know how to accept, when to accept students coming in," they actually asked for five-eighteen. And we said, "You can have a maximum of five-eighteen in this adjustment period." No additional room for more cars, more inbound trips, no diminution in what you have to achieve. And they've already achieved under by fifty percent, which we gave them. And they were already the tightest caps. So what we've done, and I appreciate Mr. Renee saying, "If we had more time, we could work even better compromise," we put something forward to the Plum Committee, which said they can, their new limit will be the five-hundred on average, again, on a five-year review, and come back. No more ability to have car trips, no more ability to have buses, no more. They've still got to have the same numbers as if it were the four-fifty number. We've had a lot of work with Archer post it being in place. We've had a neighborhood landscaping committee working with how it should look, what it should look like. We've had a neighborhood traffic committee that has had annual meetings with them. All of the adjoining neighbors have said, "You know, Archer did do what they said they were going to do." It's in that context that today, because it is the last day to act under a zoning variance plot plan review process, which is where we're in, that we forged this compromise. And again, we pledge that everything in the past will not change. And in addition to the immediate neighbors and those interactions and committees that are set up, you know, we will make sure, I apologize to the Brentwood Homeowners Association, because while they were actively, adamantly involved in the initial of the process, the notification on this hearing initially escaped BHA. But the neighbors had been informed. We had a good testimony at the original hearing. And it was for that reason I supported this effort. The zoning administrator supported it. Plum added the condition we asked to make it even tighter in this effort to compromise. But again, I think today is a day to really applaud a private school. This is, we can hold them to the highest of standard and they have to meet it. And we're not letting that up. So again, I hope you do call for these conditions, because they're tight and it can be done. And I ask the council to support this.
Thank you, Madam Miskowski. Councilmember Reyes?
Thank you, Madam President. Councilmember Miskowski has summarized the case very, very eloquently. I can just share with you that the zoning administrator, during the process of analyzing this particular case and in the hearing, I think, made a very well-stated statement in that if there ever was a case or a school that we needed to look at, as Councilmember Miskowski has pointed out, Archer School is that model. And nothing more needs to be said. I ask for your eye vote and support the Plum Committee report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. We'll now call the roll on this item. Open the roll. Tabulate the votes.
Eleven ayes.
That item's been approved. Thank you very much. Our next item has been asked to go next is item number eighteen, Mr. Zine's district. I know we are very close to losing a quorum, so I would ask that everyone please stay. Mr. Garcetti can leave and we will still have a quorum. We will have ten members.
Thank you. Okay.
Do you want to call for a public hearing or are you...
Yes, I'd like five minutes for the public hearing. I know there's representatives on both sides of this. And the community members, if they want to have a spokesperson, I know there's a number of members of the community here, also the applicant. And I don't like to open a five-minute hearing on that and then for discussion.
Okay. We will then have a five-minute hearing on both sides. The first is those individuals that are for the proposal. And if you could, again, please come up as quickly as possible. Barbara Ward, Erica Lipsey, William Wooc, Winifred Wills, and Boris Smordinsky. Again, we'll have the five minutes for each. If you could set the timer. And so, if you could...
Excuse me, do we go in the order that we were called?
You can go in any order that you would like.
Okay. In recognition of the amount of time here today, I have two facts that I would like to state.
If you could just state your name for the record.
My name is Barbara Ward. The first fact is regarding the homeowners' property values on the licensed Realtor. Their values would go down approximately ten to fifteen percent. The second is to protect the children.
It's in opposition to a gay closure and I just don't want to be absent when he speaks. And so, he's the only...
I'm sorry.
This property, the property owner adjacent to this projected proposal of a daycare center is a registered sex offender.
Afternoon, Councilman. My name's William Winook. I'm, my wife and I own the property, one of the properties directly behind this proposed project at six-six-three-seven Hesperia. And immediately upon receiving the letter of the notification, we were very concerned because our lots are quite small. They're about five-thousand-five-hundred square feet. There are six properties that immediately abut this proposed location, which is currently a single-family home. While it is one of the larger lots in the area, our homes are pushed up against it with only about thirty-five-foot-deep backyards. That includes swimming pool, jacuzzis, and we're quite concerned about the noise level. Because of that, we commissioned a noise study from a company called Troy Wall Systems. Troy Wall Systems is a city of Los Angeles contractor. They have worked on the Emergency Vehicle Operations Center noise abatement. They have also worked for the Navy in the Point Magoo area and also the NYPD for range abatement noise. They came to conclusion that a ten-to-twelve-foot wall would be necessary to contain the noise due to our proximity of our backyards. This information was not considered, even though I presented it personally and it was presented in a written form to the Planning Commission. We feel that this is tantamount to abuse, abuse of discretion, and an errant decision. No individual on the Planning Commission had qualifications with regards to noise abatement, however, they failed to consider this information. Since that time, an alternate noise study was done by a company called Asset Tech, hired by the proponent of this proposal. And subsequently, that information was refuted at the receipt of Neighborhood Council. And also, we represented counter letters from both the originator of the original study plus a legal argument indicating that indeed, LA Municipal Code does apply to free schools, which are considered businesses by the state of California. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Erica Lipsey. I'm one of the appellantants in this matter. This appeal followed a decision of the City Planning Commission. This appeal followed a decision of the City Planning Commission. The City Planning Commission approved this application subject to certain conditions, despite strong opposition from the majority of the neighborhood, and despite the unanimous decision of the Recida Neighborhood Committee. Contrary to the allegations made by applicant's attorney last week during the Plum Committee meeting, the grounds for this appeal were clearly explained in the appeal. During the pending of this appeal, this matter was again reviewed by the full Recida Neighborhood Council. The council determined, in an overwhelming 9 to 3 vote, that the subject application should be denied. The members of the Recida Neighborhood Council made factual determinations based on the testimony heard by, presented by the neighborhood, and based on their own personal knowledge of the neighborhood. These recommendations were forwarded to Councilman Ed Zine, who, along with his staff, had face-to-face meetings with the applicant and the neighborhood. After careful analysis of the facts, and after weighing all of the interests, factual findings were made, which led to the granting of the appeal and the denial of the application. I'm not going to repeat what those factual findings were, because there's no time. I would like to urge the council to refer to LA Municipal Code Section 1224-U, which states that a review upon an appeal such as this, of a decision to grant a CPU for a daycare center, one of the factors that must be carefully examined is whether or not the use will create an unreasonable level of disruption or interference with the peaceful enjoyment of the adjoining and neighboring properties. Thank you.
Four seconds left.
My name is Winifred Wills. I live at 6606 Lindley. I've been there for almost 50 years. The traffic is really tremendous on Lindley. The police record of traffic accidents on Van Owen and Lindley from 1999 on is an average of one accident a month with bodily injury. I live near Kittredge, which is the corner of the Recida High School. There are at least 15 buses come with students every day in that early morning time. It's too much traffic to add this nursery school to there. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we'll now hear from the other side. Those against the appeal, Mr. Jerome Buckmelter, David Verberdi, and Amelia Lara.
Madam President, if you will, I will go first. I'm only here to speak to the parameters of what the authority of this council happens to be on this very important matter. The municipal code states that the appellate body, which is this council, shall make its decision based on the record as to whether the initial decision-maker erred or abused his or her discretion. In a system of limitations, where we live within the parameters of what our authority is, I submit that where you have a situation where this council approved five situations where the traffic was equal, or even worse, on Lindley Avenue, that doesn't mean you have to approve every preschool in that situation, but it does say that you have a high hurdle to jump when you say that the decision-maker, that is, the Planning Commission, abused its discretion, when it did the very same thing that the council has done on five similar situations. Introduced were items that were never on the record at the Planning Commission: traffic reports, accident reports, and now we hear a noise report. The incidence of the municipal code says you have to speak to the record as to what was heard in the Planning Commission. We submit that that hasn't happened through the course of this appeal. We submit that the issues which the Planning Commission decided upon were judgmental, were within their discretion, and if the council here were hearing this issue de novo, hearing the facts de novo, then many of these issues, yes, could be decided upon. But that's not what's happening here. We're hearing the Planning Commission's, or doing the Planning Commission's work one more time, all over again, and that's not fair to the applicant. I urge that the council take that into consideration, the restraint on its powers, and deny this appeal. Thank you very much, Madam President.
Jerome Buckmelter, I'll read to make this really quick. This is an ideal property for the proposed preschool. The only negative is we have some neighbors who are opposed to this. That's the only negative, and they were opposed from the very beginning, the first hearing. They said they were going to appeal it to the bitter end, and they have done that, and have not really had shown any interest in working on mitigation measures, et cetera. This preschools, by the way, this was approved by the City Planning Department, and also the Citywide Planning Commission. Preschools are the purview of the Citywide Planning Commission, and they can handle cases, as you know, such as university stadiums, et cetera, and also preschools. Why? Because they recognize this is a citywide importance. And to the Citywide Planning Commission's credit, they approved this project, and their decision was unbiased, based on facts, not emotion, faulty, or misleading information. And Councilmember Zine and the Plum Committee sided with the neighbors and their NIMBY position, and overturned the unbiased decision of the Planning Commission that is not correct. And Councilman Zine presented three points at the Plum Committee. One is about a dangerous intersection. It happens to be 600 feet away. And also, if you apply that ratio to the accident ratio, to the times that school would have been in session, you're looking at one accident for every 11 weeks. That is not a dangerous intersection. In addition to that, Mr. Zine said, there's a high incidence of schools in the area, 47 within one mile. There's actually only 18. He said that there is 12 within half a mile, there's only five. And also, regarding the Neighborhood Council, there's so many irregularities and ugly undercurrents with that vote, that it should be set aside, and I ask you to please, please consider this seriously. And we've accepted the 30 conditions plus additional conditions, and we ask that you please consider the children. Thank you.
My name is Amelia Lara. I'm the proud and honored to be a licensed childcare provider for over 20 years. I have dedicated my life to the care of children. And because of the great need for quality, and I mean quality, not just childcare, preschool, 78 percent of which is not being met, and the California First Five Program, is what propelled me to look into providing the quality care that I would like to, which I do already. It took me two and a half years to find the property in question, and because of the ideal characteristics, I thought it was the best place. Also, I have been pursuing the conditional use of permit for 14 months. I have gone to four Neighborhood Council meetings and four public hearings. I have personally expended over thousands of hours in this endeavor, and I have spent tens of thousands of dollars on studies, reports, and representation, and all prove that the subject property is appropriate for the preschool. The Planning Department and the Citywide Planning Commission approved the preschool. And at that point, Mr. Zine and the council office stated that they will support my project under certain conditions, which I agree. The Plum Committee overturned through the Planning Commission's approval based on the Councilman's science position, which he reached after meeting with the neighbors, who have had an NIMBY attitude from the very beginning.
Okay, Ms. Lara, can I ask you to sum up? You're over the time, so please sum up.
I, I just want to let you know that I have a lot of people on my waiting list. I, my only interest behind this is providing quality care for children, and the last, God bless American children. Thank you.
Thank you. That closes the public hearing. Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Madam President, and to Ms. Lara, and the applicant, and to the community members for going through this process. I know it's been a cumbersome process, Neighborhood Council meetings, community meetings. I became aware of this. It was a contentious situation at the Plum meeting, where I interjected and asked that the matter be continued. I personally visited the site. I met with the applicant. I walked through the site. And while that site might be ideal in a different neighborhood, we talk about quality of education, we talk about quality of life. After personally reviewing it, and looking at the traffic impact, getting a traffic study of the number of collisions at Van Owen and Lindley, meeting with the residents at my district office during an evening, and getting all the input, putting it all together, while I believe we need quality education, I also believe we need quality neighborhoods. And by right, there is 14 permitted. During the Plum Committee, they attempted to, Assemblymember, Assemblymember, Councilmember Cardenas asked that they have a meeting. They went down to my office and met for approximately 45 minutes, tried to come up with a compromise for a lower number, and the applicant was unwilling to come up with a lower number. And when I visited the site, I said, you could start at 14, and if it worked out, you could go to a higher number. They were unwilling to do that. The bottom line is, this community is a residential community. There are a number of daycare centers in that area, along with a high school. Clearly, traffic on Lindley is not a quiet residential street. There's a lot of traffic up and down that street. And this facility on that site would be disruptive to the neighbors, to the neighborhood. And the appeal by the neighborhood shows that it is a community that wants a quality of life. They're not against children, they're not against Ms. Lara. What they want is equality of life in their neighborhood. And the reason it doesn't fit is because of the many factors, the congestion on the street, the fact that there's a lot of seniors in that neighborhood, the fact that they're already impacted by a high school down the street, south of the proposed site. It would fit in another neighborhood. It would fit with 14 by law, and the community said, if you want to put 14 in, there's nothing we're going to do about it. But the applicant is unwilling to do that, any less than 48, and 48 is not going to work in that particular location, that particular site. So I appreciate what the Plum Committee tried to do. I appreciate what the neighborhood tried to do. I appreciate what Ms. Lara tried to do to establish the center, but it's not going to work on Lindley Avenue with all of the congestion, all of the traffic, and the mitigation that I discussed about red curbs and no left-turn signs, et cetera, were a process to try to see if we could accommodate a lower number, but not the number of 48. And the applicant, by law, by right, can do 14. She's unwilling to do that. And after extensive meeting, after the Plum Conference, they decided to grant the appeal by the community, deny the applicant, and grant the appeal. So I would ask my colleagues to follow the Plum report, to grant the appeal from the community, and to deny the applicant. And if the applicant wishes to pursue this with 14, then the community would have to accept that number, but no way is it going to go for 48. I would ask that from my colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Mr. Cardenas. Mr. Cardenas?
I just, just want to reflect what I saw going on during the Plum Committee hearing. Just want to give some advice to both parties, and the parties are vast. It's not just one individual. Please understand that this is not the end. You're still neighbors. You're still going to coexist somehow, some way with each other. This is not the end. Truly, this is just the beginning. And I'm sure this isn't the last time we see this issue here. But when I see it again, and I hopefully, I will be on the Plum Committee should this come before us again, when I see it, I'm going to take into account what happens between now and then. Thank you.
All right. That's the final speaker on this matter. We have the Plum Committee report before us. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That matter is approved. The Plum Committee report is adopted. Members, Mr. Labange has asked that we continue item 10 till Friday?
Correct.
All right. And that will be the order?
And item six to, just correct the date to when the two different departments can get together, they want it more time. We said, Madam City Clerk?
I believe the original request was October 13th, and it needed to be changed to October 27th.
Correct. If that's okay. Thank you, Madam President.
All right. If there's no objection, we will make that rule, and ask the clerk to inform all the people who need to know. That, Mr. Ludlow has asked that item 47 be taken out, to listen to the speaker card that was submitted. So let me call at this time on item 47. If there's no objection to that, Mr. Howard Nugent.
Thank you. Thank you, members of the council. I live at 40, my name is Howard Nugent. I live at 4400 Victoria Park Drive. There is a proposal to do street closures in Victoria Park, at the north end of Victoria Avenue, as well as the south, as well as on the west side at Victoria Park Drive and West Street, and leaving the only inlet or exit outlet to the community at the north end of Windsor Street. I don't know if you can see this, but anyway, that, the orange, that's where I live. It puts every single car or pedestrian that walks in and out of, or drives in and out of the neighborhood, must necessarily go by our residence. There's a part of the letter from, I guess it's the Planning Commission, indicates that there's no significant or substantial impact to the neighbor, to the, to the streets. I don't agree with that, because every, as I say, everything is then focused in one area. One of the major factors of presenting this is that there was a petition that was drawn up, designed and drawn up and signed, in order to create this closure. And it was, however, about, I think it was a year or two years ago, at the time, the commercial property to the west of our neighborhood was going to include a Costco and a Home Depot. The, the reason at the time stated for the closure was to mitigate the excess travel, not only commercial, but also customer travel in and out of that commercial area through our neighborhood. The Costco is not going to happen. There is going to be a Home Depot, there is going to be, I believe, a Target store, plus a couple of other businesses. I don't believe in any way that the, there's going to be such a substantial amount of traffic to warrant the full closures of the entire neighborhood. Another aspect of the closure had to do with criminal activity, trespass and vagrancy at the north end of Victoria Avenue. They do have a problem there. There's a liquor store and a bar immediately adjacent to that intersection. I can certainly support that being closed to vehicular and pedestrian traffic, but closing off the rest of the neighborhood for that purpose doesn't make sense. I, so I guess basic, my stipulation is that the petition is obsolete and invalid for the particular current circumstance, because it was initiated for something that is no longer, I believe, a concern, which is the excess traffic at the commercial property. So I would ask you to vote against this proposal, or at least have it redesigned, have the proposal redesigned for safety issues specifically. That's not what the petition was originally fomented for. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nugent. That was the final and only speaker card. We do have a motion by Mr. Ludlow to adopt the action, which is the City Engineer Report for a temporary closure. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved. Members, we have two other items that are speaker cards. I'd like to look at those and see if anyone else who has called item special might be willing to continue those till Friday or next week, so that we can afford. The city attorney has indicated, without objection, if there's no objection, one of the closed sessions, item 66, can be continued to October 6th. So without objection, we will do that. Let us now take item 44, which is a required public hearing, and call Mr. Jerry Pyro. Is Mr. Pyro still with us? Mr. Pyro, please come forward on item 44.
Hi. Good morning. Good afternoon. I'm Jerry Pyro. I'm Vice President of East Valley Coalition. I am here because I see on item 44, Community Recycling and Resource Recovery, AKA Crown Disposal, they're up for another contract. They, they are the dirtiest, filthiest place in Sun Valley. They have a trash and green waste recovery station, that is outdoors. Just within the last couple of months, they got a air quality test, which they failed, and got cited for at AQMD. They have, in the past, been cited by the State Water Quality Resource Board for groundwater contamination. The neighbors are constantly breathing all this stuff. They have done nothing to improve Sun Valley, except run it down. It's got to be improved. It's got to be enclosed. They shouldn't be getting more contracts like, like they have been, until they do enclose, because they have been making money for the last 40-some years, contribute nothing to the, to the neighborhood, and we are in an environmentally sensitive area. I wish that we could do something to, to, to push this forward. They claim they may not have the money to enclose it. They claim they may not have the money to enclose it. Well, let's see the figures. Prove it. Just don't make accusations. I guess that's about it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Pyro.
Thank you.
Let me call on Mr. Cardenas.
Yes, I'd like to thank Jerry Pyro for coming forward and also expressing the sentiments of many of the people in the community, and also the fact that that particular site that Jerry was referring to, which is run by Crown Disposal, is in fact being monitored, and there's information being gathered. It's all above board, it's all, Crown Disposal is aware of the monitoring that's going on, et cetera, and notwithstanding, we certainly appreciate the community communicating with us. As Jerry Pyro, you not only have you communicated with us on that site and others, but you have provided pictures and other information that's valuable in this whole process, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas. The matter is now before us. Motion made by Mr. Cardenas. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Thank you. Members, one other item that was a required public hearing because of a card submitted is item 58, so let's take 58. Mr. Jim McQuiston.
Jim McQuiston, East Hollywood Community Association. I want to comment on the upcoming Congress, because it's going to be different than all other congresses. We're actually going to be talking about hot issues at that Congress, and that is something that we've all looked for, for a long time, and we invite all the council to come down to that Congress and listen and see what happens when the neighborhood councils start discussing issues.
Thank you, Jim. We do have now item 58 before us. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That is approved. Madam Clerk, let's go back to the items remaining.
Next item, Madam President, is item number three, and that was called special by Councilmember Smith.
Mr. Smith, item three.
Yes, I just called the item special to change one word, and let's delete the word "north" on the address.
Is there any objection to changing one word on item three? Seeing none, the matters before us. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That is approved.
And there is an ordinance on that, so that will go over for one week to October the 6th.
All right. Next item?
Item number five was called special by Councilmember Cardenas.
Mr. Cardenas?
Thank you very much, Madam President. I'll make it quick. I just want to remind us that this is a resolution urging Congress to provide additional funds for expanded services for veterans, such as the Disabled Soldier Support, which is DS, referred to as DS-3 when they return from Afghanistan and Iraq. I introduced this motion in early August, and at that time, it was just over 6,000 men and women who have been injured and who have come back home, who've been wounded, and now that figure is staggering, about 10,000. The point that I'm making is, these people go from soldiers to becoming veterans, and with all due respect, Congress, the President, they need to understand that they're taking care of business, they're doing things out of the efforts and their responsibilities that they take seriously when they become soldiers, yet at the same time, we need to afford them the same respect, and we need to give them that respect by affording ourselves the responsibility of funding and making sure that they get their disability checks, make sure that they get their services. And right now, nationwide, this process, this particular program, for example, is only funded with $1 million and only 10 individuals. Obviously, we need it to be fortified, obviously, the President and Congress need to make sure that they do the right thing and fund it properly. Thank you.
Councilmember Gruehl.
I just want to stand up and recognize Councilmember Cardenas for introducing this motion, because we all too often forget about individuals who serve our country when they return to our city and our states and all across the United States. So this is an important measure to make sure that we remind the federal government, we remind every municipality and every constituent and community member that we need to let our voices be heard on providing services to veterans. So congratulations. Thank you, Mr. Cardenas, for introducing this motion.
All right, the matter, the motion for resolution is before us. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That is approved. Next item?
Madam President, do you wish to clear the desk before going into closed session?
Yes, let's do that.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
They are posted and referred.
There are excuses on the desk. Councilmember Zine requests to be excused Wednesday, October 13th, to leave at 11:30. A motion is required.
Mr. Smith moves. Mr. Reyes, seconds. Mr. Zine is excused.
And Councilmember Parks requests to be excused Friday, October 1st, to leave at 11:00 a.m. for city business. That meets council policy.
Mr. Parks is excused on October 1st.
And that clears the desk for closed session.
All right, can we quickly clear the chambers? We have one item left on closed session. I'd like to, anyone who's not to be here should be leaving. Excuse me, I now understand from the city attorney that this one can be done in open session, so let's take it and rely on our city attorney's judgment and get right to it. No need to close down. Everyone can stay who would like to stay.
I appreciate you staying for this one. Mary Dennis from the Real Property Section of the City Attorney's Office. This is a settlement of a condemnation lawsuit by the City of Glendale to condemn a portion of city-owned property that's located within Griffith Park. This property is a long sliver property that runs on the other side of the LA River from Griffith Park and is not currently being used for park purposes as part of Griffith Park. The settlement is for approximately $531,000 plus interest. The city attorney is recommending that you approve this settlement, that you approve and direct that the settlement proceeds be placed in a trust fund for the use and benefit of Griffith Park, and authorize the city attorney to draft and execute all necessary settlement documents.
In an abundance of open government, we appreciate that. All parties are in agreement. Mr. Labonge?
Thank you very much, and I want to thank the City Attorney's Office. Members, this is basically a sliver of land on the north side of the Los Angeles River, adjacent to Glendale by their power plant, and the City Attorney's Office worked hard, they worked with the trust for Griffith, which gave the land and had to review this here, and the money in the ordinance will go to Griffith Park for, explain that, will you?
The improvement and benefit of Griffith Park, we contacted the heirs of the Griffith family, and they asked that it be directed in that fashion.
Great, so anything in the future will come back to us to decide the benefit of the park. I thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge. We have the report and recommendation from the city attorney and budget and finance. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That is approved.
Thank you.
We'll send it forth with. I believe that concludes our agenda items. Members, are there any announcements? I see no one standing. Mr. Padilla, did you have an announcement?
Sure, just a couple of quick announcements. First of all, we prayed for the Dodgers last Friday, and they've been on quite a streak, three games up with five games left. They're doing incredibly well, and we're looking for some postseason play. Second, colleagues, I just wanted to explain, I didn't get a chance to talk to all of you before being out yesterday, but I was fortunate enough to be part of a wonderful panel in Washington, DC, with city officials from Florida, from Ohio, from Washington, DC, from Massachusetts, and other places, trying to raise city issues, municipal issues, on the federal radar. We're going to have the first of the presidential debates tomorrow evening, and want to encourage everybody to watch that and vote in a reform way in November, but one thing that we haven't heard from, too much from, from the presidential candidates is, what about American cities? And what are they going to do for American cities? And I think that's important for us to keep in mind as city officials, from housing to transportation, to certainly budget and public safety. It's city government where it all meets the road, and so we had a very good session yesterday. It was covered by the Washington, DC press and webcast somewhere, so we hope it adds to the discussion and debate between now and next November. Anyway, just wanted to explain my absence to you and folks watching at home, and again, a reminder about the presidential debates and Election Day on November 2nd.
Mr. Reyes, did you have an announcement?
I wanted to reemphasize, in the National League of Cities, those that do attend these sessions, there are very few individuals who have that access to raise these issues that reflect metropolis like Los Angeles. You'll find in the League of Cities, most of the concerns evolve around the smaller, mid-sized cities. So when the question becomes, where does the federal money go when it comes to security, homeland security? How do you interpret terrorism? Where does the money go from a national point of view? It would be great to have more voices from this body attending these sessions, because this is one of the few opportunities we have to make those statements. So I just want to reaffirm what our council president's statement about participating in these particular issues, and they do have an impact, because the federal government does listen to the National League of Cities, and rarely do you find the City of LA, City of New York, City of Miami, the big anchor cities of our nation being as aggressive as it should be. And I know when we go, I know Councilmember Zine and myself, Commissioner Padilla, were very consistent in our roles, and I would want to encourage my colleagues to join us in a separate. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes. Any other announcements? Are there any adjourning tributes? I don't see anyone. Oh, Mr. Reyes does have adjourning tributes, but everyone, please rise.
Thank you, council colleagues. I'd like to adjourn in the memory of Daniel Lubau Awakuni. He is the son of City Planner's kid, Iris Awakuni. He was only three years old and was undergoing his third surgery, a heart condition, since his birth, but unfortunately, due to complications, passed away at the operating table. Passed away September 26th of this year, and he survived by two fellow city members of our city family, of the planning department. I'd like to also adjourn in the memory of Liliana Biasovich, passed away Saturday, September 25th. It's a tragic accident. The two-year-old was accidentally run over. This tragic event has the Biasovich family in complete sorrow. We thank Officer James Biasovich from our Hollenbeck Station for his hard work, and we send our condolences. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reyes. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.